Okay, let's get going. Welcome to the planning board meeting for November 2nd, 2015. This is a shout out to John and our other two members that are missing. Hopefully, they'll be viewing the tape very shortly. John is recovering well and will rejoin us at our next meeting. The agenda tonight, our 7:45. With the 3440 Hayden Row has requested a continuance, so they won't be there. So we'll probably continue the legacy stuff till about 8:00. Then we'll get some of the other business of the board done. And then at 9:00 o'clock, we have the tennis club on Lumber Street and a scenic road public hearing for EverSource. I'd like to remind everyone that November 9th, there's a big vote for two dead exclusions. You can vote all day at the middle school gym, as usual. So anyway, with that, let's continue the discussion on Rafferty Road with Legacy Farms. Roy and Ruth.
Good evening.
I think we're almost there, but there's a couple items we need to kind of, I think, rash up, go over.
Sure.
I think the key one that we ought to talk about first is the width of the road, because that seems to be a lingering issue at this point. And I think we've got a memo from Beta, and let's see.
Oh, we have a Beta representative?
I can't see you there. Just a couple.
You can join us, Andy, if you want.
So basically, the question really got there, and I quite frankly didn't realize that's what we were looking at last time. I probably would've got that resolved the last time around, as whether it should be 22 or 24 feet. And...
Mr. Chairman, can I make a few comments on that?
Sure.
So we actually went out there today and actually physically measured the width of the entire road, you know, every 100 feet, just to see where the current road is. And as you're all aware, it's kind of threading the needle a little bit in doing this project, because you've got a drainage swale on the south side of the street, approximately, it varies, but anywhere from 1 to 2 and 1/2 feet off the road. You've got a drainage swale on the north side of the road, which is the side where the sidewalk swung ago. You've got utility poles down that whole length of the road, which are approximately varying 2 to 2 and 1/2 feet off the road. And so when we looked at this preliminarily with VHP to figure out how to design this and maintain a width of the road that right now is, it varies right now anywhere from 21 to 21 and 1/2 feet. And the design that VHP came up with was 22-foot road. Now, I know someone mentioned 24 feet in Ashto. My understanding of Ashto is you can actually have a gravel edge, a flat, smooth gravel edge, which in fact, I think you'd find that with a gravel edge, we have close to 24 feet in the finished road. And the sidewalk itself, the 117 trees that are proposed to be taken down are over a distance of about a half a mile. It sounds like a lot of trees, but when one looks at these, I think you all received a copy of the aerial photograph, it's actually frankly, a minuscule amount of trees relative to the area that it's in. And again, it's 117 trees, some of three or four inch caliber. There are a few that are quite large, the 36 and more inch caliber, but it is over a distance of a half a mile. So getting to the width of the road, you know, we felt in designing with, and I'll let Wayne speak in a moment about, you know, the width, we felt that the 22 feet is a width, especially if we put a line down the middle of the street. And with the gravel shoulders, it minimizes the amount of trees that need to be cut down. It minimizes the amount of wetlands, and frankly, it keeps us off of the EverSource property, which would become a whole issue unto itself. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think, you know, to Roy's point, I mean, 11-foot lanes are more than acceptable on a residential road like this, rural residential road like this. The intent of the project, again, was to add this walking path, minimize the removal of the trees to the most practical, in most extent, practical, and to stay out of the wetlands as much as we could. We had a few wetland impacts, you know, here and there, as we demonstrated last time. We could run through that again if needed, but that was really the intent. So if the road was to be widened another 2 feet, you'd be talking a lot more trees, a lot more wetland impacts, et cetera. And again, from standard engineering practice, highway lanes are 12 feet wide, to put that in perspective, you know, 11-foot lanes on a residential street are actually very generous, in my opinion. I'm a roadway guy, so I think that's, they're very generous. And I'm not going to dispute what Beta says about, you know, quoting Ashto, that he's correct, but 12-foot lanes, again, that's what you see on a highway. And I don't think it's necessary in this situation.
Why don't you give your response here?
All right, General, I mean, I don't disagree with Wayne's approach that 22 feet is reasonable for a residential road. Where I think we come down on is that this road will likely see more traffic than your average residential road. And when you start to approach 2,000 vehicles per day, we'd like to see a little, you know, a one-foot shoulder type of a shy distance is a more appropriate design. I also agree with the other gentleman that, you know, a recoverable shoulder, a gravel side, a soft shoulder is not an unreasonable approach, but our standpoint, our recommendation would be with the amount of traffic it sees would be to 24-foot width.
Other question. Claire, go ahead.
I'd be interested to see what the traffic engineers say about this, but it seems that the wider the roads, or the better the surface, the faster the cars go. I remember years ago, Spring Street took your 5-inch it all the way down the end of Spring Street, and then they repaved it, and you were down there in a minute, the cars just stepped on it. I am looking at the conditions that were in the master plan special permit in condition 62, which if you were doing the senior housing, which I assume right now you're working towards, that agreement only required the 22 feet, and the 24 was only if you would go up to the 200 commercial.
I think that's if we changed the master plan special permit. As it is right now, we would have to... How it's written today, Claire, is 24 feet.
Actually, my recollection of the language in the master plan special permit is, it needs to be 24 feet unless the planning board decides otherwise.
Well, when I'm reading, what I'm reading is May 10th, 2010. This is what was signed by the planning board then, so I guess you're saying there's been amendment to that.
No, that's it.
No, what it's got is Roy's proposed changes in it.
Well, these are the changes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. I'm just questioning whether one foot on either side is going to just increase the speed, because there are some issues going around now about the amount of tree cutting and the amount of widening, and you're doing a path in as well. So if you do the, if you do the one-foot shoulder on each side, and then you do the path on top of it, you're opening it up and widening it even further. And I do believe there are some residents that are concerned about the look and the character of the feel of the road, and doing everything we can to maintain that. And traffic calming often has to do with designing the road in such a way that it forces people to slow down a little. So that's just my comment on making it wider makes it faster, I think.
I went out last week.
Wednesday.
Wednesday with Chris to go up and down it. Before I met him, I drove the width, or the length of the road, and I almost clipped a mirror, partly because there was a lot of leaves on each of the shoulders. Maybe if there's a few more cars on it, they'll get blown off, and it was obviously a little bit. And I wasn't paying attention to the center line after that. I kind of called up Roy and said, maybe if you're going with 22 feet, you'd need to put a center line on the road so that old folks like me can make sure that we stay on the right side. Then we're out there, and one point, Chris and I are on one side of the street. I was wearing a red vest, so we were pretty visible. There was a dog walker on the other side, and two cars started to pass, and they both came to a stop. We weren't all at the same spot at the same time, but we were within where people got cautionary. So, you know, bottom line is, with the sidewalk, I don't think the obstacles would have been on the shoulder at all, but...
But getting to your point, Ken, I do think there should be a line painted down the middle of that street. I think it would make it much safer and more visual, and I think actually it would help slow people down a little bit, because right now, you're right, I mean, I find myself doing the same thing. You drive down, and you're not really paying as much attention to which side of the street you should be on, because there's nothing to define it.
And part of it, I'm looking at trees, you know, trying to do other things while I'm driving along.
There's no, I don't see in the proposed plan, any other controlling factor aside from the speed limit signs to limit the speed of the vehicles on the road to the level that the road has been designed for, which is 35 miles an hour. There's no other limiting factor to control the speed. There's no speed bumps, there's nothing else that's designed within this, this proposed design, to keep people at that limit.
We might need to put some speed limit signs. That's probably a pretty good idea.
I think it's a very good idea.
You know, because this is going to be, this is designed to be a cut-through with minimal curb cut type road. I mean, that's, I mean, and a lot of our streets like Hayden Row, East Main Street, I believe, have 40 mile an hour limits, so there will be a tendency to go faster than 35.
People do greater than 35 on Wilson, and everybody knows. That's a narrow windy road, a lot more impediments. So on this straightaway, I know people do 50 down there. So there needs to be some other restraint designed, regardless of the width of the road that you increase it to, you need some restraint other than the speed limit signs.
Well, it might be a revenue source for the Hopkinton Thonist.
And also, if you stripe a center line, don't you usually put a side stripe as well with a little extra?
It depends on the character of the road and so forth. It's not necessary all the time. So yeah, on a larger road, yes, you'd have a, you'd have an edge. On a rural residential road like this, you don't see it that often, honestly.
Well, it's not really a residential road.
Rural road.
Won't be, yeah. I mean, my thinking was, if you did the side stripe as well, again, it visually narrows the road. It's not physically narrowing it, but it visually narrows. And all the traffic studies show, whatever you do, visual cues cause drivers to slow down on their own.
You're talking about a fog line?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, so it doesn't make the road any narrower, but visually, it defines it in a narrower way, and it'll cue the driver a little bit, I would think.
I don't disagree with that.
One of the reasons that I think we're trying to get the traffic to go on Rafferty is because we're trying to avoid, I'll say, Wilson Street traffic. We're trying to encourage that way, as opposed to people turning off and going anywhere else.
Correct.
So where are the planning board members on the width? 22 feet with a stripe sounds okay.
Can I ask a question on the number? So the volume of traffic has you thinking that 24 makes more sense. At what traffic volume would we put a 22-foot wide road make sense to you?
I think we'd say the general cutoff would be about 2,000 vehicles per day. I don't recall off the top of my head what your traffic numbers were.
No, you can certainly check them.
But again, I think if you have those gravel shoulders, you're going to achieve the equivalent of that.
I think we had it in our letter, I think, somewhere. We had the number in the application, I believe. Wasn't there somewhere?
I'm just wondering if we just tip that number or that constraint, or for a significant deal.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it was significantly, like, double.
The projection is set at under the 50 new daily trips. If it goes to the age restricted, it does it. That's what I'm looking at from Exhibit C from the vision.
Not all of these.
Are they different?
That is for full site. Some of them will head out the other way, some will head down on Rafferty.
Yeah, I'm just reading off here. You know, it was just saying they're looking for numbers. That's what it says right here.
But that really doesn't, the original projection is something like 3,000 daily trips. This is the current project, okay. What we really don't have is the, in this table, we don't have what Legacy North and the Ashland cut-through traffic add to the thing. So I guess we don't have the numbers tonight.
Chairman?
Yeah?
I have one more concern about the gravel shoulder. Any additions to what I also said about, already said about it visually widening the road? I know there's a current problem right now with Bay Path and people parking on that road, and they're probably going to have to deal with that one way or another, and I don't know where that touch is going to be when this is all done. But I would wonder, if you build there, and you build that one-foot gravel edge, is that going to be an encouragement for people to continue to try to park? Because they feel like they can pull off a little bit into that gravel edge. It just feeds into that.
If I can comment, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I think when this road is completed and the sidewalk is in, there has to be a prohibition on parking in that street.
There is, I think there's, yeah.
Well, but it's not enforced. I mean, you can buy eight, nine cars out there, and I just think it's a hazard, because it's one thing to have the dog walkers, but if you have the dog walkers and the cars parked, I just think it's problematic. I've spoken to them about, I even told my designer for them, is build a parking lot on their site, you know, just a gravel parking lot, so there's no impervious problems, and park all the cars on the site. I mean, for, you know, not a lot of money, you could build a parking lot there, and no one parks in the street.
And their response?
I think they're intrigued by the idea, but until we finish this process, I don't want to pursue it.
Okay.
But I think we have to pursue it.
Yeah, I just don't want to add more encouragement to the cars.
Okay, so I am sensing a consensus of 22 feet with a center stripe at this point.
I just have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
Five or so years ago, when this was created, what was the reasoning for a 24-foot wide road?
That's Legacy North, which is a 24-foot wide layout.
And we were considering 200,000 square feet of commercial, which has significantly more traffic.
Okay.
And a lot of that traffic would be right in that corner, so most of it would probably, I think, go out more that way. Commercial ones, or the residential might go, either way.
Yeah.
Let's see. Okay, so we've kind of got that done.
Can I just ask, what you said center stripe, any more thoughts about the side stripe?
That's a good question.
It still visually narrows it.
I would agree with Claire with the side stripe.
Yeah, that's a good one. Look to it. Can you show us the double yellow right there? Yeah, we could certainly add that, you know, it gets kind of, it gets kind of interesting when you add an edge line, because normally you like to put it about a foot off the shoulder at a minimum. So you could probably do, given the character of this road, you could probably go 6 inches off. So now that theoretically, that kind of narrows the lane to like 10 and 1/2 feet instead of 11 feet. I don't disagree with your approach, though. Sometimes it does channelize things a little bit more, and it may slow people down. I personally, I don't have any issue with that, if that's what the board wanted to do.
Recommendation from Beta?
I concur. I'll be all right. I mean, typically, you would have a 11-foot lane, but 10 and 1/2 on a residential, for the moral character.
We're trying to keep this, keep this slow.
Well, we've got, you know, you've got a sidewalk, you've got obviously known, a known parking problem, you've got a lot of walkers and so forth, and I think that edge line would really clarify where the edge of the road is and keep people going slower. So I think that's a good, a good alternative.
Actually, you bring a very good point, where there's a berm, and having a white line in front of the berm will help delineate the berm itself.
Very true.
And we are adding, you know, the first line, we're going to probably expect Legacy, but every year from there on, it won't be a town expense, so we'll maintain it. Okay, so we've come up with the street width and length. The other thing, in rereading the package for this, the turn lane gets shorter on Cedar Street. And let's talk about, let's have the engineers talk about that for a second.
So this is, this is specifically on, at the Cedar intersection. And it, Ken, if I could, Mr. Chairman, it's being shortened versus what was originally discussed, I think, is that, is that?
That's the question.
I'm a little unprepared for that, I apologize.
I guess a couple things. One is, Rich Holworth, who did the original design, who's been working on this throughout in conjunction with the traffic analysis people, again, this was seven years ago, and so they're looking at it in today's world, and have come to the conclusion, based on the traffic counts on the project itself, based on the traffic counts for the 180 USA just restricted component and the turn lanes that they feel are required for the project, they feel this is the appropriate design for it currently.
So this is on, painted on the Cedar Street page, on the Cedar Street page, and not on the gravel?
One sheet back.
So basically, how many cars you can start, store going left before you get back into the traffic?
We're talking from the 300 to the 240.
So that's 60 feet, so...
Three cars.
Three cars.
Yeah, I don't even, when we looked at this design, I don't even think the queue length was more than 100, 150 feet max, from memory. Maybe the original analysis showed something, showed something higher with the commercial use.
Why don't we think about approving what's been designed with the condition that if the Village Center gets built, we look at the queue length?
You don't mean the Village Center, you mean the commercial component?
No, Village Center, because I think that's going to draw more people. You know, if you get a shopping center down than the Western Earthbound Center.
I see what you're saying. So you want to revisit it if the Village Center is built?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Because, I mean...
As of right now, though, as, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
It is the bypass road idea, where we're alleviating some traffic downtown, and 60 feet of backup. What would that look like on the grid that we have up now, on the graph of that?
Because I don't understand the question.
If there's 60 feet, if there's three cars backed up, how deep would that be? Would that be to the kennel, or would it be?
No, 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 it's not Cedar. It's Cedar Street. Cedar Street. Actually, show them the lane, if you would, please.
Ross, do you remember what we, what the queue was designed for?
Yeah, it keeps going beyond, like this?
Yeah, that left turn.
Designed for a few plus the full.
If you're coming from Southborough, which is in this direction, you'd be coming this way here, and you're returning up to Rafferty.
Is that 180 feet?
So this is the lane here. Now, to the chairman's point, saying this should be revisited if in fact, the Village Center gets built, if in fact it's required, I don't have an issue with that.
Sometimes I do take that term like that, and there is, you have to wait for the people coming down, the 85.
You have to do that no matter what.
Right. So if it gets worse, if something, if there's more traffic, if we revisit it because there's more reasons for traffic, well...
There's going to be more people wanting to turn left there, significantly more people turning left.
I think that's a good solution.
That makes sense.
You okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're all set with the length on there.
Are they going to actually widen the road to the south side of Rafferty and Cedar to make that right turn onto Rafferty?
Why don't one of you guys explain exactly what's going on with that intersection, so everyone understands?
The widening is actually going to be on the east side. So here's Rafferty here.
Yeah.
There'll be no widening at all on the west side.
Yeah.
The widening will actually be on the east side.
Yeah.
So if you're coming out Rafferty and you take a right, that's where the widening will happen. There's actually a utility pole there now, if you've gone by, I'm sorry, a bit on it, the pole needs to move back 4 feet.
Okay.
Godrail will come out, the slope will be extended, the riprap will be extended. This corner here will be widened on Rafferty, and this shoulder here will be extended also.
Okay.
So there'll be no touching of the west side, but only on the east side.
Gotcha. Okay, so you're going to make that turn a lot smoother?
A lot smoother.
Okay, good.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions on this intersection?
They just have one question.
Go ahead.
Just in the diagram, that little island looks like for the right turn coming off of Rafferty onto Cedar?
Yeah.
What is that island? I couldn't figure out what that was.
It's just a delineator, so that someone...
Is it painted, is it?
I think it is only painted, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we've got the road width and intersection kind of straightened out. Any questions anyone else has on those two items? No? Okay, so we're all set on that. Then we're into the sidewalk. The sidewalk is a five-foot meandering sidewalk, and I'm trying to remember what other issues in the Beta letter have or not brought up. I think we got everything resolved.
I think so. I think the stormwater is the only, you know, lingering issue I have against.
And I think we left that with since then, that the town is going to clean out the one line that needs to be done, and you guys are going to make sure the water gets into the other one.
Right, so, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Go ahead.
So since our last hearing, we coordinated with Beta. Beta has talked to DPW, CONCOM. I've spoken with both DPW and CONCOM. Basically, in essence, what we've agreed to do, what the applicant has agreed to do, is basically install about 400 feet of stone lined swale on the southerly side of Rafferty. Thanks, Ross. The southerly side of Rafferty, from Cedar up, in that, basically in that drainage ditch, I confirmed with CONCOM that they were comfortable with that, that they, even though that technically is classified as a wetland, that it was acting more like a drainage ditch. So they confirmed that they were okay with that. Additionally, on the north side of Rafferty, we had a, we have a separation, previously had a separation with the grass strip, anywhere from 2 and 1/2 feet to 4 feet, depending on where we were going with the, with the walking path, whether it was going around the wetlands or utility pole, et cetera, at Beta's suggestion. And it was a good one. They were concerned that that really wasn't getting a lot of infiltration credit, so what we did is we changed that grass to basically a 3-inch minus stone lined area, if you will, just basically 3 inches of stone for that 2 and 1/2 feet or 4 feet. And I confirmed with DPW today that they were fine with that, and they thought that that was a good solution to try to slow down the velocity. We understand how steep this road is and so forth, so similar to what's happening on the south side with the scour and erosion and so forth, and the fact that that, the stone will mitigate that on the south side. We're doing the same thing on the north side, and DPW thought that that was a good solution as well. And I think you guys had asked for some revised stormwater calculations that I believe Ross sent over to you guys, and I apologize, but as late as today. And I, I'm not sure if there was anything else. From memory, that was, those were the only issues.
Those were the big issues, yeah.
The only other thing, it says Beta defers to the EPA in this issue, this is a stormwater pollution prevention program prior to construction.
Right.
Is that something this board needs to worry about, or do we defer to the EPA?
It's essentially whether it gets permitted as a single project, not...
Right. Yeah, so right now, the applicant is proposing to construct Rafferty and Cedar as two separate projects, most likely at two separate times, depending on, there's a, again, as Roy said, there's a utility pole that needs to move on Cedar Street. We really can't do anything until that moves, and we know that utility companies, he calls them today, they'll be out there tomorrow to move that, right? So I'm being facetious.
Actually, that pole requested moved six months ago.
So most likely, yeah, most likely the work on Rafferty will get done first, and Cedar Street will follow up after that. So technically, you know, there is less than an acre of disturbance on each project, so technically you don't need a swep. You know, it's really not that big a deal. It's something that Roy's contractor will do.
If we need, if we need to work in conjunction with CONCOM, if we need to get a swep, we will. I don't think we will, but again, that probably is an issue for CONCOM if we need it.
It really is. And it's a construction, you know, it's a programmatic, it's a programmatic permit that is done through EPA when you disturb more than an acre of land. And the way it's broken up with the two projects, technically you don't disturb more than an acre if something happens, and they have to do them at the same time. They can certainly have their contractor do that.
Go ahead, Claire.
Question, I may have just missed this in your comments, sir.
Sure.
I know DPW said they would clean out the clogged culvert, but they mentioned it being 12 to 18 inches too high, and I'm noticing in their letter, they asked to either lower it or else to provide a berm to redirect the flow. Is that the berm you were just talking about now?
No, I think relative to that, and Ross, please correct me if I forget this here, but I think what, in lieu of lowering that culvert, what we agreed to do is provide stone riprap at each culvert side on the southern side, the three culvert sides on the southern side, and a series of check dams at those culverts. But I don't think that DPW was planning to lower the culvert, nor was the applicant at this point.
Well, I'm seeing another point was the stone check dams, but I'm looking under Beta's letter regarding the culvert, and for the culvert, they said provide berm to redirect the flows to this culvert and make it effective in reducing the flow in the the flows to this culvert and make it effective in reducing the flow in the swale. So the check dam was another point, I thought.
In this case, I'd say the berm and the check dam are pretty much synonymous. It's just a check dam is a berm. It's just generally that's a.
Different vernacular.
We're going to put one, essentially a berm, just downstream of the culvert. So basically water, people will get the right elevation across the culvert.
Is Beta comfortable with that?
Yeah. If you read our cover, we actually say a sort of either or, either lower the culvert or make these modifications to make it work.
Okay.
So we're comfortable with that.
The letter I'm looking at, those are separate items. So I just.
I think you want to go behind or not?
Maybe not.
Maybe not, maybe not.
Twenty-third, October 23rd. Okay, as long as.
Oh, regardless, we're comfortable with what they're proposing.
I'm just staying up to you guys.
I appreciate that.
Okay, culvert's good.
I think the last issue that's remaining is a bunch of trees that are coming down as a result of building a sidewalk.
Well, I have a point about the stormwater.
Go ahead.
It's more a procedural thing. It's not necessarily above, I think you guys are on point on the same page. But as for me getting on the same page, I just got this updated letter with the comments. And I really do like to talk to liaison to the CONCOM and been on the CONCOM. I like to kind of, when you say, oh, I talked to them.
Sure.
I don't see that in black and white.
No, I understand.
I don't hear feedback from them. And I know Ed was just here and I think he had comments and he got called away. So I would like to know what he had to say about this more particularly. So I don't feel comfortable without having more information. And then Beta comment about getting DPW to approve the design of SW1, but stormwater is Station 18 to Wilson Street, whatever, blah, blah, blah. At what point do we get DPW to approve a design if that's what your suggestion? I don't.
Roy, if you can answer the question, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, we actually got a letter from CONCOM in response to all of Beta's comments, saying that they had no issue with any of it. I think you all received the same letter.
Not since.
Have you received CONCOM approval for this project yet?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Over a month ago.
Okay.
And I spoke to Don McAdams after noon about all this and he's fine with everything that we're discussing.
I don't doubt it. Yes, I think everything looks pretty fine. I just don't see in the process of where we get the actual notification.
If what he's doing violates their order conditions, they will be the enforcer.
That's why, you know.
If they're not happy, they have a bigger clout than you and I do.
I think it's eyes a dotted and a piece across. I just would like to see in black and white what he's saying. And we just got this. I just sat down and looking at it.
I understand.
And I would like a little bit more information. So if the letter from DPW is in my, in our packet right now.
No.
Is that the same one that he's saying?
I haven't received anything from CONCOM.
So.
So a couple of things that I.
I think the chairman said it best in that the order of conditions is really going to supersede anything we do. And if anything, we deviate from those, it's really in the purview of the CONCOM. And I think, my understanding, speaking to Don today, that everything's been discussed with all the beta correspondence has been accepted by them.
I think if I could.
They're all next door, aren't they? Have they met today?
Andy, I think that Phil spoke with CONCOM about this prior to me doing that. I just, I called Don last week just to confirm, actually to your point. I said, I was, Beta told me that they spoke with you, but just, you know, because this is classified as a wetland, I just want to make sure that CONCOM is okay. And Don echoed, he says, no, Phil did speak with me. We spoke about it at the last hearing and, you know, we're comfortable with that.
And I'm not done with that.
Yeah. I don't have anything in black and white. I'm just telling you what I was told.
But you said you thought I'll get together with a couple of guys for coffee or lunch or something and then we'll update what's going on. And I just haven't done that. So.
Understood.
That, this just coming in today and what you're saying, I just don't feel as comfortable.
Just to clarify with that, I mean, CONCOM only covers those areas that directly impact the wetlands along the road. It doesn't cover, they don't have overseeing powers over the entire stretch of road. Only those areas that impact the wetlands in the buffer zone. So it's important to clarify that fact. And in regards to SW1 here, Beta recommended on the 23rd that the sidewalk that's drawn should be redesigned and lowered to allow road runoff to shoot by the rapid across the sidewalk into the existing midland.
Which has been done.
Which we've done. That's in the current plans.
Correct.
So the sidewalk now, so the plan has changed and the sidewalk is going to be lowered between.
Yes, that's correct.
I just mentioned that I believe CONCOM issued an order of conditions for this part and they deferred to the plan you were on the stormwater.
Oh, that's right.
They did.
Okay. Well, I think we've heard from our engineers at this point that stormwater is acceptable design.
Yeah. As of this letter, the issue is whether the DPW would be willing to maintain the three-inch stone at the edge of the road.
And I did speak with John today about that and he understood that. Because he specifically, John specifically walked this with Phil from Beta on the other side. And I told him what we were doing on this side to kind of mimic that. And he goes, no, I have no problem with that. That's probably a good solution. If the, if the grass wasn't going to function properly, the replacement of the stone is acceptable.
Okay.
They mentioned to Phil, you know, what if the DPW finds the stone a problem? He said they can just replace it with grass.
Okay, I think now we're down to some trees and then we can kind of maybe.
Can I ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
With respect to the surface water that's going to go on this existing road that's already eroded in the south side gully, so that now the bottom of the gully is lowered in the pipe intake, that's happened over the past 10 or so years. That's eroded away. Now, we've already got downhill, there's a whole community of 21 houses downhill of Rafferty that are directly impacted by the existing road surface and the surface water runoff. I have neighbors that have backyards that become swimming pools during the spring runoff. So now we have, according to the engineers from Beta, a 35% increase in impervious material in the roadway and the sidewalk combined. So now, within the confines of this plan, there's no, there's no attempt to address that surface water. It's just assumed that a pre-existing condition, which is actually already bad, is going to accommodate for infiltration and not have an effective impact on the people down slope of the proposed work. So what's going to be done to address that? Are we just going to ignore it and accept it? Oh, well, it's a country road and everybody can just live with a flooded basement. I mean, what are we going to do about it? Now's the time to look at the question. At least, you know, you've got experts here, you've got engineers here that can address the situation. I mean, who determined what the scope of work was with respect to the improvements on the road?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think as we described last time, for a good length of Rafferty from Wilson down, except right near the end at Cedar Street, we are proposing basically an infiltration trench. And what we've done at Beta's suggestion is we've actually changed that from a grass-lined trench to stone-lined trench. And it actually has a subdrain installed in there that will actually infiltrate some of the water that's running across the existing 20-foot pavement, 20-foot paved area of Rafferty and collect that and infiltrate some of that. The what doesn't get captured in that runs across the sidewalk and down basically the grass slope towards the wetland. And that will be, some of that will be filtered and infiltrated in the side slope prior to hitting the wetland. So it's a better situation than it is now, based on the introduction of the sidewalk.
The houses that have flooded basements now, which end of, of, not Rafferty, reservoir, where are they? Are they close to Wilson Street or are they close to the lake?
The first three houses, the first three houses, when you come from Wilson down Kruger, those houses on that level, their lawns become, at least one of my neighbors, John Bush's house, number five, gets his lawn becomes a quagmire in the spring.
This is higher.
If I look at the tulpul, I don't think those houses get it from Rafferty Road, but.
They don't.
They're off of Wilson Street. I'll buy that. The problem's on Wilson Street, maybe.
I don't know, I don't know the people further down Kruger Road, but all I can tell you is what's going on right now. Now, if there's no, the point at which this whole project starts is accepting the existing conditions and accepting.
I see.
Mr. Chairman, I think if anything, with the drainage work we're doing here, we're actually improving the situation. And if you look at, if you come in from Wilson coming down Rafferty, the grades actually rise up a bit beyond over and through here. So I don't see anything that'd be doing here that's affecting the houses down at Kruger. Now, what's happening, you brought up a good point. I think the way Wilson drops down and then swells around, I'm sure water is running down Wilson. I don't think it's coming from Rafferty.
I think the next item that we've got is trees and then we want to try to come to conclusion tonight on this, if possible. I'm going to sum it up with what I hope is the consensus the board is. If we're going to build the sidewalk, which we think is needed, that we're going to lose some trees. I don't know any, you know, different. The Trails Committee is looking at this as a potential trail that connects and loops from the state park. And then they have plans to connect along 85 to get down from the center trail and kind of bring it all in there. And this trail will then bring it along to get over to Legacy Farms Road North, which is really like Legacy Farms Road South. There isn't a day I go by that I don't see at least one or two people walking, if not a lot more, if I'm going out at a certain time. So, you know, I think that the dog walking folks need a sidewalk or they're going to, you know, we're going to have major problems with it. So, and I think all those items were considered during the master plan special permit process when we required all these conditions to go in into it. So I think it's a necessary evil, per se. Does anyone else have a different view of that on the planning board? And then comments from the public?
Just a question, sidewalk, is the chairman or meandering path or?
Both.
Sorry, I missed earlier.
I mean, it's a five-foot walkway and made out of asphalt is what is proposed.
I did notice some good-sized trees and, you know, they are kind of right near where you need to put it. I just wondered whether this is going to be a sidewalk primarily, as long as the shelter stays there, this is going to be a sidewalk primarily designed for those people. It's not like a regular pedestrian sidewalk to walk to the bus or whatever. Whether something meandering to avoid some of those more significant trees that kind of went in through the, into, I mean, I would think the dog walkers would prefer to be able to walk a little further away from the traffic.
I will tell you that we, believe me, we don't want to cut any more trees than necessary. Frankly, it costs us more money and the bigger the tree, the more it costs. So if I could avoid every big tree, I'd be thrilled to do it. That being said, we studied where it can go, where it can't. And by the way, where is the property line? Because the property line is not that far off the street. Now, we got Eversource to agree to allow us to do some transitional grading on their property because even as tight as it is, we still have to transition grade to their property. But they didn't want the sidewalk on their property, per se. So when you look at the location, the walk does meander a bit, not a lot, but a bit in some spots. And the concern was, if you drive it further back, you're actually going to cut down more trees. And so that was sort of the dilemma. So the question is, and to say nothing of drainage and wetlands and, you know, all the rest of that kind of thing.
Wetland impacts were significantly more.
Actually, Ken and I walked that a couple of times, five, six months ago, looking at where it could go. And I actually flagged it out once with the engineers and then I flagged it again because I tried to avoid. At one point, we had 225 trees that were going to come down. And that's why we changed it and changed it. We got done. By the way, the 117 is not just on Rafferty. I'm going to guess it's probably like maybe 80 or maybe 75 on Rafferty. And the rest of them are over on Cedar Street where the road widening is happening. So it's not just Rafferty. And that 100-plus trees is over a half a mile. So it's, and for those who want to take a look at it, if you want to see a few of these out, it'll give you an idea of, you know, the amount of, I mean, we're talking thousands and thousands of trees here. And I think once you put the sidewalk in, you take out these few trees, I think you're going to find yourself a, I mean, you still have a significant amount of trees. It's basically forest on both sides. So it isn't like you're losing something of great magnitude, but.
You're losing, what you're losing, Roy, is the entire feel of the road. There's a canopy on that road. You've got no development around the road until your development goes up on the top. It's got a feel that's unique in the town. And it seems to me that what's happening here with this design is that the heavy equipment's going to come in and they're cutting this swath, as Beta's engineer expresses it in his reviews, of 10 to 15 feet off the edge of the road for expediency's purposes, right?
Absolutely. But that's absolutely false. The, there's nothing to do with expediency. Number one, as I mentioned, there's a property line not too far off the road.
I understand.
Number one. Number two, there's wetlands off the road. And so if you were to drive it any further back, you're swapping cutting trees A and B for cutting trees C and D. So it's not really an either or. So it's, and you're into more wetlands. So.
Are you saying that the Beta's engineer is incorrect in what he stated in the peer review?
I don't know what he said. I don't know what you're referring to.
Well, he's saying, he expresses in the peer review, both on the early part of October and the latter part of October, his latest peer review, that they're cutting a 20-foot to 15-foot swath parallel to Rafferty Road as it exists right now. Are you telling me that's not the case?
Well, wait a minute. Let's be clear. I mean, you say cutting a swath. Are we cutting a line of delineation of roughly 10 feet to create a five-foot sidewalk and a berm? Correct, we are. And is there a property line, I'll pick a number, that may be 20 feet off, 15 feet off the street?
Right.
That goes the whole length of the street, which is the public right of way? Yes, we are. So short of, you know, meandering 30, 40, 50 feet on someone else's property, there's no other way to do the sidewalk. The only other option is not do the sidewalk at all.
When we looked at the meandering option, to Roy's point, because of the grading impacts and the fact that that kind of drops off so drastically with the wetlands, not only is, let's turn away from wetlands, but not only is the wetland impact a lot greater, because of the irregularity, if you will, of the slope, the highs and the lows, we ended up cutting and filling so much the trees, the amount of trees that were being impacted, to Roy's point, were significantly more by having that meandering offset from the road, if you will. Because you're basically, when you think about it, you're going through a forest, right, that isn't flat, right near the edge of the road. Yes, it drops off, but it's roughly, it's somewhat consistent along the edge of the road. If you go 10, 20 feet into the woods, it's a lot more irregular. And in order to make that flat, to put the paved path, you're cutting and filling and you're doing, cutting a lot more trees down to make that construction possible.
Can I, can I ask, those trees that you'd be cutting down, you see you're cutting down a lot more, are you saying that you'd be cutting in all the way from the roadway in or just within there?
Correct. We wouldn't have been touching the ones near the edge of the road there.
Right.
But the path, if you will, in order to create this walking path, would have been larger had we made it meandering and it been set farther back from the road because of the grading irregularities with the topography.
But there's another issue one has to take into account. Even if you were to move the walk back, which you can't because of property lines and wetlands, even if you were to do that, you're going to significantly damage those remaining trees' roots in the process of excavating gravel bases and putting the surface on it, to say nothing of the trees over time, frankly lifting and contorting the walk a bit. So I can, I can fully agree with everyone's concern about cutting trees down. I totally get it. I'm not a fan of cutting these trees down, but there's no other way to reasonably do this walkway without taking more trees or at least taking these trees. I mean, the only other option, frankly, is do no walkway at all.
One other thing, is the situation with the trees, the caliber of the trees, any better on the other side of the street?
No. Matter of fact, the other side of the street would be much worse because of the, you've got a drainage swale going down the whole way. And on that side of the street, you have to cross the street. I think, we've actually looked at this seven years ago.
The big ones on that side.
We actually looked at this seven years ago and tried to have a consistency of having the walker down that side. It made the most sense.
Okay. Last question, because we've got to get going. And then Mavis will be next. We're already 15 minutes beyond where we have to be.
On the sidewalk, even if you was to stay with the existing plan in terms of its roots, does it make a significant difference if you follow the existing topography of the land and not have to do so much build and just do trimming off? So you're back to grade as the existing road?
Unfortunately, we come across ADA compliance issues. And it's one of the reasons why we have some retaining walls in some spots and fill with a riprap slope in other spots because if we follow the undulation, it would be a lot easier for us to do, but we wouldn't meet compliance.
Yeah, I know. You have to add the 5% grade on the path.
Yep.
And if you do greater than that, you have to have a landing every 30 feet, from what I read on ADA.
Well, they. Well, there would probably be more than that if we're 10 or 12%. Because some places it rises quite significantly.
All right.
I appreciate your saying, believe me. I don't want to do this.
I just had a question. The sidewalk must be 5 feet wide?
I believe that's an ADA requirement, too, isn't it?
Well, I'm thinking of the sidewalk that runs along East Main Street now. I don't think that's 5 feet wide.
That's 5 feet.
Is it really?
The new one we split in?
Is that ADA compliant?
It's 5 feet wide.
Is it ADA compliant?
Yep.
And it can go as little as 3 feet if there's an obstruction that's a problem to move.
In an isolated location, you're correct.
I think my only other comment is that I would hope that Rafferty Road and other roads that are impacted by taking trees down don't look like the intersection at Legacy Farms Road South and East Main Street. That has been butchered so much, unbelievably. We know that there are going to be trees put in, replaced, but they will be small trees. It'll be 25, 30 years before they get to where we, where the trees were that were taken out. And I understand that some trees needed to be moved, so we can put a big roadway through there. But I'm just saying, I think for us who have been in Hockington for a long time, and we appreciate the beauty of the trees, and that's one of our outstanding rural characteristics, is the presence of our trees. I'd just like to point that out.
Okay, thank you.
I don't want to see another intersection like that.
Yeah, the, I understand your concerns about the intersection. This board signed the death warrant on a bunch of trees on Ash Street to build a sidewalk recently, which is pretty well done. And quite frankly, other than the fact that I know where all the trees were that I was, and I go by that a lot, most places, there was another lur of trees behind it, and you don't notice it too much.
Well, I knew you would be taking care of Ash Street, so I didn't come up here.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one comment to Mavis's comment about the intersection of East Main and Legacy North and South, I actually agree with you 100%. Right now, it looks like hell. And trust me, before we're done, working in conjunction with Peter and Wayne, and working in conjunction on our own property at 83 East Main Street, 83 East Main Street right now looks like a house of horrors. But once we get that road finished, and we get that site landscaped, and the stone walls rejuvenated, and we need to put some more major trees at the intersection where it meets where Peach used to be in that area, we will be doing that. It'll look a lot, lot better.
Okay. Let's try to wrap this up. Elaine, on page two of the memo had, had four conditions. And condition three says that the board of its agent name approved field modifications or to retain trees during construction. I would say the board or the tree warden.
Wouldn't that be its agent?
Well, it could be an agent, but I would say the tree warden. We delegated that to them on other streets. And then we'd be adding line stripes, and revisit if the centers, building centers built the queue length. Elaine, did we have any other conditions we had to add to this?
No, that wasn't.
Now, you had cautioned us not to vote this until we finished the Master Plan Special Permit hearing?
Well, it was only until you discussed the two possible road widths, which you have.
Oh, okay. So, you're okay? Because we have the authority in this thing to approve a shorter, or narrow road. Okay. So, given all that, any other comments, questions from members of the board? I'd entertain a motion to approve the Rafferty Cedar Street with those five conditions.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Now, before you get going, we've got the Master Plan Special Permit. Do I have to open the hearing today formally?
Yes, and you can, yes, and you can continue it through the day if it's, if it's the board's pleasure.
Given that we're running out of time for the rest of the meeting, because we have to open it, because we, we're time constrained on that.
And it is advertised.
And it is advertised. Okay. So, we will open the public hearing, application to amend Legacy Farms' Master Plan Special Permit, which is increase the number of dwelling units to 180 units. Let's do about five minutes on that to maybe just get board members' comments and questions, and maybe, and then we'll continue it on, and then we'll be all set. I'll start off some of the comments and questions. When I read what was in the memo and the conditions, they all seemed to be very confusing to me. I think that was Elaine's comment. And I don't know why you would, you either, I think, have to pick the 180 or the commercial. I don't understand why we're with a Master Plan Special Permit that we're continuing the option, but maybe that's just me. It certainly gets a lot easier if you decide. Right now, you have the commercial, and if you decide to go with the residential, go with the residential.
Mr. Chairman, I think the thinking on that was, until such time is the Planning Board actually approved site plan approval, we just wanted to keep the option for whatever reason. If you didn't approve it, we had something to do with it.
Okay. You kind of have that either way, but...
Well, I think, if it needs to be clarified, we're happy to clarify that.
Well, I suggest we take some time and have Elaine kind of work with you with some language that people can understand.
That's fine. That's what happens when you use a high-priced lawyer.
I understand. That's probably the problem. A couple of engineers, we'd have it made. Okay. Entertain a motion to continue to December 21st at 7:30 p.m.?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, you said December?
21st at 7:30. Seeing no further discussion. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, this, for board members, let's try to get rid of some other stuff, so that in 10 minutes, we can continue on with our last two public hearings. First one is a Bridle Path subdivision, request for performance guarantee release. Towns accepted that subdivision. We have some money left over, I think. And Elaine, we've got to give it back, huh?
Yes.
Okay. So, I'm looking to, what is it, to release all the...
The remaining, so they're releasing interest to the...
To release the remaining money for Bridle Path. I have to see where it is. Oh, it's on page 10. So, it's, so it's releasing 42, 100...
42,000, 180 dollars.
Right. And interest?
Plus interest.
Okay. So, you want to make the motion, Brian?
Yes, I move that we release the amount of 42,180 dollars.
Plus interest?
Plus interest.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Conley Hill Estates, performance guarantee reduction. This has to do with the berm, or the, I think it was a berm, cracks in the curbing, curbing, not berm. So, this is to reduce the amount to 50,834. I know I talked to John Westerling about that. He was comfortable with that. So, I think Elaine did, too.
Do you remember the effect that he was, they were okay with the current situation?
Okay. So...
I move to reduce the amount from 68,834 to 50,834.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. We'll wait on Number One Lumber Street until Paul comes here. Looking for the minutes of 9:28, 2015. They were in your packet last time. We never got to them. Anyone have any comments to those? If I see no comments, entertain a motion to approve 9:28, 15 minutes.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Seeing no further discussion. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. For minutes of October 5th, 2015, any comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, and entertain a motion to approve.
So moved, seconded.
Second. Seeing no further discussion. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries. Okay. I'm leaving master plan update on here. I'm just going to say, those people that haven't got your sections in, you're overdue. And detentions will be...
Uh-oh. Demerits.
Demerits and detentions, you know. But we've got to keep moving on that to meet the goal. But tonight, we don't have time to do much more. So, other than, other than issuing leads for getting to work, that's, I think, the only update we have today.
I have one point of work.
Sure.
I was voting abstained for the 10, 5 minutes, because I haven't seen the video yet either. So, I wasn't here. So, I'm abstaining from that vote.
Okay. And let's see. Correspondence? I don't...
Just a notice from the Board of Appeals.
We got the notice from the Board of Appeals. Christian Estates, this is to re-sign a...
A 401K that released two of the subdivision lots. Apparently, there was an error in the plan reference, so they're asking the board to re-sign that. Same lots.
So, we need a motion to re-sign 401K release. This will release a couple lots.
So moved, seconded.
Second. Oh. Not seeing any further discussion. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? Motion carries.
Five signatures.
Five signatures.
There's also a 7:45 hearing to continue.
Okay. Oh, thank you. The 7:45 hearing, we had it, did we have a proposed time for that?
They haven't asked for a particular date, so I'm just guessing the next meeting, the 16th, at 7, like, 8:00.
November 16th at 8:00 p.m. Okay. Look for a motion to continue to that date.
So moved, seconded.
Abstained.
Abstained. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. How do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained? One. Okay. I think we've gotten rid of all the other stuff that we need to do. Any board member comments, or liaison reports, or anything like that? Future agenda items?
Just five.
We got five? Okay.
Three.
So, jeez, now I got here four minutes early. Thank you very much for all your quick work. I'm going to take a five-minute water break, because we are done with all the business that we can do, and then I'm going to get organized. So, I'll try to get the applicant in out of the hall, if I can find him. Overhead electric service for Number One Lumber Street, which is of Paul's interest. Elaine, do you want to kind of lay out where, where your feedback is in talking with Eversource and everything else like that?
I think the question came up is the status of when the connection can go across Lumber Street underground to connect to the new building. And so, Eversource replied to me that the DPW had confirmed to them, so that they, that the utilities and so forth were marked. So, they went out, and they're working to complete the, what they call a granted location and rights. And so, once they do that, they will seek border selectmen approval for the conduit street process. And I asked when that would be occurring. They didn't have a date for that, but they know it's a priority for the town.
Okay. I think we actually, you have any news on that, too?
I think that's pretty consistent with the update we have. As far as the granting, we got the documents today, as a matter of fact, and we signed the rights, and that they have access and such. So, we have that as of today. But we've still been waiting on the date, and obviously pushing and working with the road closing moratorium and the dates around that.
So, the DPW has issued the road opening permit, so they're okay. They're ready to go whenever the border selectmen approve that.
Okay. So, the border selectmen would have to approve a new poll, too. So, it's kind of the same criteria.
We're in a lot better shape now, in the last few days.
We've progressed a lot.
Good. Elaine, do the great job.
Like usual. Anyway, at this point, let's see what time I'm seeing here. I've still got a couple of minutes. We're waiting for 8:15. How many folks from the public are here for this particular hearing? Okay. Makes it maybe easier now. Am I allowed to complain, Ken? Anyone else know anything about the project? If, if, public is more than welcome to talk about the tennis club.
Is this true?
In four minutes. If I thought we'd be so efficient on all the other stuff, we would have given somebody, we would have given somebody else another four minutes before we continued their hearing.
I would have taken the over, Ken. I will tell you right now.
Okay. Well, we're not quite there. Have you guys gotten the hearing that we noticed, or outline that we typically do?
No.
Oh, I'll put some of those over there. We'll get all this. We try to follow an outline, just in order to kind of not go over things again and again and again, and work towards issuing the approvals. So, we'll start off with that. And at 8:15, when I public, open the public hearing in two and a half minutes, then you'll, you'll be ready for an introduction. two and a half minutes, then you'll be ready for an introduction. Probably explains why our viewership is down so much due to all this dead airtime. Anyone have any good one and a half minute stories? Are they done with the sidewalk on Wood Street? You go by it every day, obviously.
It's looking good.
Looking good?
Yeah.
The east, or West Main Street?
It doesn't go right to my house, though.
Not quite.
Not quite.
You can do it if you want.
Is this route stopping at the church, or is it...
It stops just a little into the church.
Gets to Proctor Street, basically, I think. People are going by the, West Main, I haven't been by there in a couple of days. Is that one also probably the same status?
Same people walking on it.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
They don't have the top layer on, though, right?
No, but people are using it.
Okay. Okay. I think it is... Yeah, it's close. That clock is a few minutes early. Okay. Let's open the public hearing for site plan review. This is zero Lumber Street, Hopkinton Tennis Club. And this is a site plan review. As I mentioned, we will be trying to follow this outline. We have ability for the public to talk throughout the process, particularly in the detailed discussions. And on item four, we'll all add to the outline if we think there's other things that we needed to add to it. With this project introduction and review, introduce yourself, please, and...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Donahue, I'm with Fletcher Tilton in Framingham, and I have the pleasure of representing Crandall Hicks Company, Inc., with regard to their application for site plan review. With me at the table are Don Satterfield, the president of Crandall Hicks, and the owner, and Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering, who will be making the detailed presentation. There's a cast of people behind, which are here to answer any questions that the board may have with regard to the application, as we can try to give you as much information as you need to try to move forward to approval. Very briefly, what I have before you is an application for what was shown on the master plan as Lot 7, the most southerly lot of the neighborhood mixed-use master special permit approved by this board back in March. It is for construction of a little over 39,000-square-foot two-story building to be used as a racket and swim club that we can describe in more detail. The facility will have with it 10 tennis courts. Four will be permanently have a roof over them or covered. Six will be covered on a seasonal basis. It will also have a swimming pool facility that will also have seasonal covering as far as it's located. It is site plan review as indicated by the chair during the approval pursuant to your bylaw, and we'd be glad to answer any specific questions as we go through the process.
Do you want to give a little bit of overview of the project, show the board a little bit what's going on at this point?
Sure. Didn't know how you wanted to follow this agenda.
We're going to get, we're going to get into all the details, so you just give a couple-minute overview.
Okay. Can give you some handouts so you can play the home game. Makes it easier. Pass those down. Jesse Johnson from Bowler Engineering. So, for those of you that haven't seen the project before, I can play with the location. This is also called Lot 7 on the master plan special permit that was done. It's down Lumber Street. And what we're looking to do here is provide a tennis and fitness club facility located in the central location of the lot. It'll have 10 tennis courts. Four, as you see, situated behind the building here, that will be covered year-round. And then they'll have six also courts that will be covered seasonally. Also have a pool facility on the outside for adults and another children's area for swimming facilities. The pool area will be covered seasonally as well, that's the current plan. And then to access the site, you'll come off the front of Lumber Street with one primary entrance in and out, with parking situated in front with circulation around the site for 123 parking spaces. And we feel the parking is adequate, given the size of the building. The building is two floors with just over 19,500 square feet per floor, or a total of about 39,000 square feet of area. It was designed at the two floors to take advantage of some restrictions that were on the lot that we didn't want to encumber any further. We have wetlands surrounding the property, pretty much on three sides, all the way around, and their buffer zones do come into the property, which we show here in red. So, we had some restrictions that made it challenging to meet all the program needs, but also adhere to the local requirements for your planning, but also some of the state requirements for stormwater. We think we did a good job fitting that in and essentially threading the needle with all those requirements. We went through a number of different iterations that come to this, so we feel we vetted out a lot of the problems, and what we have before you is what we feel is the best product we can, we can come up with for this project. We do have, obviously, onsite facilities for stormwater controls. We were careful to design locations throughout the site on the perimeter to spread out that stormwater, which is really a guiding principle that they want to see at the state level and also usually the local level. You want to make sure you're putting the stormwater back into the ground as many places as you possibly can, so we have those around the perimeter. We also have three of them that are underground, one here, one here, and one here. So, we have a number of spots. We comply with local bylaws, we comply with the state bylaws, and we're actually providing an excess of what's typically required for stormwater treatment. Now, we're also extending utilities down to the site for water. We'll extend gas into the site and electric as well. We will have onsite septic. There's no sewer available. We have located an area here in the front that we'll have for sewage disposal. That plan will be submitted this week to your Board of Health. We've already gone through the design process, so to make sure that the grading and some of the other restrictions associated with septic systems was already vetted out prior to finalizing this design, so we feel confident that what you have before you isn't going to change as a result of a septic design. We did try to size that conservatively, size for 300 lockers, which is a Title V guidance that you can use, so that will back us into how many locker spaces you can have for people that are going to use the facility. So, we feel good about that. We've also gone through and done a real nice landscaping, design for the site, paying careful attention to really dressing up the frontage of the lot, but also even doing interior landscaping throughout of the different varieties and species that you can see on the landscape in a more detail. We do have the natural benefit of having wooded buffers around three sides of the property, which is a substantial benefit. I can give you a brief aerial overview, so you can kind of see that a little more dramatically. So, this is our spot right here. You can see this is an open space parcel that's going to be designated forever to be protected. Then you have the sportsman's club down in this direction here. And to give you a scale, that's about 1,000 feet right there. So, you've got about 1,000 feet from our property line, so you start to get to the effective use area for the sportsman's club. And here, across the street, you see two of the industrial zone parcels that are in And then also, we have, obviously, lighting designed for the site. We did design it with 22-foot poles. We have discussed with some of the local officials that we are not in compliance with your bylaw that requires 15, but we would like to go into some detail about why we aren't proposing the 22, and we think it's a better fit than the 15, and maybe asking for a formal waiver. One of the other waivers we're asking for is for the extension of the sidewalk across the entire frontage. We did notice that your bylaws require that or ask for it. We think that going with the sidewalk down across the frontage to this point really is a sidewalk to nowhere. We didn't think encouraging pedestrian travel, as I was mentioning. Allow me to flip that over. Towards the sportsman's club or toward, there's no other facilities that can be developed there, we thought wouldn't be of benefit to anybody. So, we thought we would concentrate on just a sidewalk connection piece that maybe potentially could go up to the north. And going back to that. So, as I mentioned, we've had everything in compliance outside of that with your local guidelines, but also taking into consideration the design guidelines that were in the master plan special permit that have control over this parcel. We do have a couple areas that we would need some recognition from the board specifically to have stormwater controls within your side yard offsets. This basin here, this basin that we show into the open space parcel, and another one over here. Really, we're just a direct result of not having any other choice to put them in any other location. We really vetted that out as much as we could, and feel as though we have the best design that we can put forward in that regard. But that's a general overview, and I'm sure we can talk in more detail about some of the other things.
Thank you. Okay. Let's move on to Elaine's comments, and can you comment on where we are in receiving of documents and stuff like that, too, please?
We received some revised plans after the board's mailing this week. Those were reviewed by Beta, and so you have a revised letter this evening, mostly related to stormwater changes.
But we haven't...
But you haven't seen those revised plans, but I think it was mostly stormwater related, so the plans were for your, for upper-level review. We did also receive late Friday, building plans, but electronically, but not on paper yet. And once we have those, we can verify the parking requirements by looking at the square footage and the uses of the building. So, the parking requirements have not been verified yet.
Okay. So, the expectation for the members of the board is you will probably not be approving today, because we've got these outstanding things basically due to some mittles that were a little late.
I did want to add, the design review will be reviewing the building plans at its meeting this month, which is the third Tuesday.
So, when we schedule the second one, we want to have it after that. Okay. Other comments? Questions? Okay. Beta, how, where are you?
We've issued the original set of comments, to which we've received responses. Majority of the issues are closed. We've had sufficient responses. I think most of the ones are actually already mentioned. Request to waive the requirement of the sidewalk, and we would suggest the board discuss that in more detail. And the traffic assessment, we had some questions about some of the trips and the additional square footage that was additional from what was in the master plan. Also, in the stormwater, some of the infiltration chambers were close to groundwater. We've made some suggestions for some changes, which they have, they have done, but we're additionally suggesting that when, when that excavation is done, that it be monitored to make sure that the assumptions that were made are verified.
Would that be a condition, I believe? We'll talk about that in a little bit.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
Okay.
And, let's see, I think that was, and then the lighting was the other, the other issue that was still on the table.
You, Beta's also doing the review for the Concom also?
Yes.
Where, where's the Concom? Do you know where they are?
I don't know where Concom is.
I can answer that?
I think it was for them tonight as well.
We just actually had it closed and approved.
Closed and approved. Basically substantially as presented to us?
Correct.
So, that's good news.
They were, they were waiting on the premise of stormwater, and we felt comfortable with our stormwater design.
Okay. So, they, they are allowing stuff to go into their 100-foot buffer?
Yes.
Okay.
As close as 50. 50 feet and actually grading up to 38 feet.
Okay. So, well, that's a big hurdle. Okay. I think we're through the first three here, so we're moving right along. Item number four, planning board members and the public get to add to the agenda if needed. I added one based on the Beta's comments of just adding the word "traffic," just to go through that extra, explain the square footage. Any board members have others that you would like to add to our, which is our normal list?
So, I'll, Mr. Chairman, kind of piggybacking on the traffic comment, what about any type of commercial traffic? I see you've got vendors coming in at all, but I think commercial, like vendors coming in, doing, dropping off their, I don't know, assuming there's going to be some food or what have you, or towels or things of that nature. I would just add that to the list.
Okay. Anyone from the public interested in adding to, to our, our list? Okay. Well, I don't know, well, go ahead. Ah, gun control. Oh, not gun control. Oh, my God. Gun sound.
I'll recover in a minute. My name's Bob Draper, I'm from Hopkinton Sportsman's Association, and I just wanted to ask that the board be aware, as the gentleman pointed out, that there is a sportsman's club beside us, and I'd like to include in your minutes, this portion regarding the mask law, I consider noise as it relates to ranges, and I'd be more than happy to supply the gentleman here with a copy of that also.
Thank you.
If somebody would have a business card for yourselves, that would be helpful to make. And if anybody has any questions about that, thank you very much. We were concerned about the noise of the swimmers, you understand, and the tennis players affecting our skeet shooters.
Given that you've shown up at the last several of our hearings like this, I assume you'd like us to put in a similar clause that we've done before?
We would. There'll be one forthcoming as, as it goes along further from our turn to...
Okay.
To vote, just to ensure that there's no question that it was done, that's all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Lumber, Lumber Street, there's a windy road in there that's very narrow. Is there going to be any upgrading to that with all this traffic?
We'll add that, it's a list to talk about. Okay. Brian?
I don't see anything in here about snow removal, mechanical screening, the usual.
Mechanical screening, we're going to give it to them anyway.
Yeah.
Snow removal, okay. Any other?
Or storage.
Or snow removal, storage. Okay. So, now, I think, I see no, no other ones from the members of the public. Let's go down, and I'm going to pick and choose from the detailed discussion, it's not going to go right down the line, because I want to get some of the hot-button ones, so that if you have any redesign, you can get it done between now and then, so we'll have some interim consensus of the board. So, I, the first one that I saw that, I think you're doing pretty good on the stormwater, in fact, you probably are pretty close to there, so we're not going to talk about that tonight. Let's talk about site, let's talk about first...
It's still on the list, though.
It's still on the list. We will get them all, we're just going to pick the ones so that they can do their homework before the next meeting and we get it done. Let's start with site lighting. And there is a waiver request on that, so obviously, there's a discussion on that, so...
Yeah, and if I could hand out another material, just again, to make it a little bit easier. I've highlighted in blue an alternative to the design that we've submitted to you. We've submitted the 22-foot pole design. I'll flip that up and show you on the board. And what I've just handed out to you in a reduced fashion is the 15-foot design. So, here's, here's the one in the plan set that's submitted. You'll notice, more than I've highlighted, there's only 12 fixtures that would be required, 12 pole mounts that would be required to meet the lighting levels that you cite in your standards. And if we have to go to the 15 feet, which is another requirement you have, we can do that, but what it does, it pushes it to 27 fixtures, which more than doubles the number of fixtures, but we cannot comply with the light level standard that you cite as being a requirement. So, we have to pick between the two, and the reason that is, is we only have one location that we can put our septic system. It's a substantial-sized septic system. The soils are not ideal for septic. It's, they're not the worst in the world, but they're not the best. So, it's, it's a pretty sizable system. And because of the grades out there and the separation that we need from groundwater, it requires us to put it up front. And when you do that, and you put that septic system, which is really in a big footprint, we have to spread the lights around the perimeter of it, and because we're trying to meet a certain light level in the middle of where that septic is, that means we've got to use a brighter lumen, brighter bulb on that light, but also we've got to use more of them, or we can go up higher. So, that's why we chose to go with the 22 feet, because in our opinion, we thought aesthetically, less poles... less poles would look better, and we could also meet that lighting standard that you guys require. We could certainly do the 15 feet and drop it down, but we will not be able to meet the ratio. It goes actually from a 17:1 to a 41:1, and your requirement is a 20:1.
If I may ask, this lighting bylaw is new, and we're just starting to actually implement it. It was passed like last year, I believe, with the 15-foot. I'm hesitant to immediately start weighting what we put in, and some of these ISNA guidelines are a little hard to understand or follow, so I don't quite know what you mean when you say you can't meet it, because I was looking through the foot candles shown on your 22-foot plan, and I'm seeing lighting levels that we haven't seen in any of the recently permitted plans. I'm seeing lighting levels in some of these aisles, I've seen sevens, fours, fives. Reading some of these, your chart down here, it says a maximum 3.5, minimum .6, and as I said, I was seeing fours, fives, sixes, sevens. We've been trying very hard to bring the light levels down in this town, and particularly with the preponderance now of the LED lights, which are a very intense light. Part of the reason for the lower poles is when you have a tall pole, like a 22-foot pole, you're looking up into the light source, and that's what provides, is glaring to the eye. And a 22-foot pole, you know, you're going to be looking at a 22-foot LED light. The lighting plan that you had, there's spillover into the side, you know, you seem to have a lot of light in places where it's not, like in driving aisles, where you're going to be in a car with headlights. So I was a little surprised that these are the light levels that supposedly comply, because the recent plans we've approved for new developments don't come anywhere near this. I really think you could bring these down.
Sure, I can try to touch upon that. I'm not sure what the other sites look like, I don't know if they had size parking lot we had, maybe just a layout. Some of it does fall on geometry, you only have a certain number of aisles available to you to put light poles in. And the standards that we're being asked to adhere to are a minimum of .2-foot candle in any region. Doesn't matter if it's in the access aisle where your vehicle is, or a pedestrian walkway, but it says .2 minimum foot candle. And what we provided, the one that we've submitted, the 22-foot, is a half a foot candle on the minimum side, and then the max is eight and a half. So that's what allows us to stay under that 20:1 ratio. That ratio is nothing more than dividing your average max by your average minimum. And unfortunately, when we go to the 15 feet, we do the best we can, we more than double the number of fixtures, as you can see in the blues, they're spread out throughout the site, but that's still, just to try to meet those minimum standards of the .2, we got .3 on a low, and but our high is unfortunately 12.4. And that's because you have to put so much in one area to make it spread so far, that you're sacrificing that spot directly below the light to try to make something better far away.
And with more poles, you don't have to do this, but you can concentrate your light more.
Right, we've got 27 on there now. Even doing it more, we still are restricted by an interior area because of a substantial utility, the septic system.
Well, you know, if I can make a comment, just not to you as much as to the board in general, again, we do know these are new, we've been struggling for years to try to get lighting guidelines, we also struggled with trying to find a standard that was understandable, and I think we settled on this ISNA thing, which is the professional organization for lighting, but, you know, if seeing the requirements we've put in as a board, and this is what they produce, maybe we should be rethinking how we wrote these, and rather than this applicant asking us for a waiver of our regulations, we should be waiving the ISNA requirement, because again, I think if we look back on some of the recent projects permitted, and I do mean recent, like in the last year or two, I haven't seen seven and eight foot candles in anything. And we've asked numerous applicants to knock the light level down, and they have, and I understand you're doing this not because this is what you want to do, but this is what we're telling you you should do. And I'm just saying to this board, I think if this is the first application of the new lighting bylaw, what it's producing is off the walls. It's not consistent with what we've been building throughout the town, nor what we want or need.
I think it's fair to also be able to give them feedback, though, because the first presentation of higher lights, not going to be playing tennis in the parking lot. I think that if they look at us, if they look at our bylaw and look at it and come back with more scientific, another approach, just look at it another way, and you can make it work, we'd appreciate it.
Which way would you like to make it work, by height or by the levels?
Both. It's not, and this is, it's not hard, you know, I'm not telling you what to do, but I would appreciate it if you tried.
I understand. We have done a number of different iterations in-house, I can certainly give it another shot. If you could give us a little bit of guidance as far as which way you would like to have it lean towards, only because there is an encumbrance, that septic system, that's hard to overcome, because there is no other lot, no other space on the lot.
There are a lot of issues that all interrelate, so--
Yeah, everything kind of dovetails into each other, and that really is the only spot for the septic. We don't like it being underneath the parking if we could help it, but unfortunately, the soils are what they call a C-type of soil, it's, again, it's not ideal, but it requires a lot of fill come into the site to lift it up, which would have tremendous expense to the applicant regardless. We have to work with that, and that kind of sets the grade of the site, sets where some of these utilities have to go. And we feel as though it's still good design, because we can keep the levels down at the frontage to have essentially 0.1 or nothing on the sides. We can still obtain all the really important things that we feel, which are the intrusion, maybe, or the buddy properties, the aesthetics on what you see from the front, we still think it looks good from the front, because you're going to have few poles to look at, and we have a lot of landscaping to help try to offset that and break it up.
So let me see if I try to understand this. If you go to the 22, you need the uniformity requirement, for sure. And the overall light levels at the 22 are higher or lower than what people are thinking that they should be? Are there big numbers on the 22-foot?
The biggest one on the 22 is eight and a half, on the highest.
And where is that approximately?
Those are usually falling right under the fixture itself.
Okay.
I'm seeing an eight and a half and a 7.7 with the 15-foot poles.
Yeah, those actually, the 15s went up even higher, unfortunately, because we didn't have the height to take advantage of, we were maxing out at 12.4 on those.
So basically, the 12-foot poles, we get worse uniformity and worst hot spots, 15-foot.
So, Mr. Chairman, does the solution have to be binary, either or?
No.
Is there an option for some type of combination? I know it goes outside of the guidelines, but--
Well, can I ask a question about? The bylaw says that the property may have exterior lighting, may not have exterior lighting that exceeds the average illumination level recommended. It doesn't specify, I mean, it specifies it's an upper limit, it doesn't specify a number.
Yeah, it just doesn't exceed.
So I'm wondering if they can work within that and, you know, to lower that a bit. And it isn't just a waiver from the board, it's a special permit to reduce or to not meet the standards. And so it's what the, what that average illumination level is that sets the upper number.
I mean, even with, you know, showed the fixtures, your dark sky objectives, you'd have that much light hitting the parking lot, it bounces up, and this is where you get, you know, this is the whole concept of dark sky, you get areas where you can't even see the stars. And you may not have spill off the site, naturally there is spill off the site, but even if you don't have spill off the site, you have this intense amount of light on a parking lot and your surrounding areas, you've got a glow. And again, you know--
You won't see the lights for the glow from the tennis courts, Claire.
No, 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 I'm serious, though, this is why, you know, communities are trying to keep the light levels down, because cumulatively, you've got the Price Chopper down the street, you've got 77 Main Street, you've got the Muse, you put all this together, and you've got a whole section of town that's got a cumulative massive amount of light, and you literally can't see the stars. And, you know, I would be interested to look back at some recent permits that we've done between, you know, Price Chopper, Dunkin' Donuts, the Hopkin Town Muse, some other things, and I really question that we've been permitting things with light levels this high. And it's not the fault of this applicant, if he's trying to meet what he thinks we're requiring, but I think we should really think twice, as you said. If it's an upper limit, then we can bring that down, as long as it's for safety. Some of these areas, people are in their cars with headlights, they don't need that intense amount of light to find their way.
Let me ask you this, what's an upper level that you would feel comfortable with, that we can at least shoot for?
Well, I'm recalling that in recent plans, we've had plans that were in, you know, the one and a half, two, maybe upper of three-foot candles. I'm not remembering anything with fives and sixes and sevens anywhere on the site.
Yeah, honestly, I don't think we could achieve that, only because of, we would have dead zones in the middle of that septic area because of the size of it.
What if you try a hybrid, where you have maybe the taller ones over the septic system and then bring the other ones down elsewhere? And then could you also then put the context of this with the area around it?
Sure.
And--
Yeah, also, it's worth noting that, on average, these fixtures are about two to three feet below in grade the road line, so you get a little bit of grade relief that helps kind of offset the true, you know, if you're standing at the street line looking at these fixtures--
So they're going to be--
They're going to be--
The site is down--
Yeah, on average, two to three feet between all of them. So this is the open space parcel that obviously is not going to get touched, and then the sportsman's club, I'm not going to speak for them, but I can't imagine they're going to come this way either, because there's a wetland on this that has protective buffers on it, so--
And then you've got the skeet range, right?
And then we have the two parcels across the way, but again, we can keep those light levels backlit or backprotected so they're not going towards the frontage, and we can keep those poles down lower on the frontage side to help that as well, and keep everything from spilling over on the front. So, yeah, I think we--
Who's directly across from you?
I don't know the names that we have.
Hopkins at Lumber Street Auto.
Thomas McIntyre.
Okay.
And Harper Brothers Realty Corp.
I did note that building lighting was also included, the exterior lighting that's mounted on the building, is that included in the--
We do have some, yeah, at the egress point.
But is that included in the photometric thing?
Yes.
Okay, so try to get to another hot topic. Basically, sidelining's got some homework to it, I guess. Any other comments from the public on sidelining? Trying to think of what, oh, let's go to sidewalks, I think we can kind of hit sidewalks tonight, just because we seem to be talking about that a lot tonight, but, and that was a waiver request, and try to get through that today, because that'll give you some direction one way or the other. And I think everything else, you will have, I think, enough direction, or you're on the right track for getting everything ready. Sidewalks. Basically, if you look at the plan that we're given, basically, they allow access to the north side only. Putting that in the context of the site, how do board members feel, or the public feel about--
Could I ask, do you have the diagram that shows the different parcels in the neighborhood mixed-use district? I know this is parcel seven, but show this in relation to the other parcels, like where the Hopkin Town Muse is.
Sure, we do. If you could just give us a second, I think we used it in the conservation presentation.
Right, but I would like to see that, because I do think that connectivity is an important factor, and this is part of the neighborhood mixed-use, a whole area that was permitted with the understanding that these would all, you know, work together and complement each other, so this isn't in isolation of the other developments.
I apologize.
We did have one, we seem to have lost a board somewhere in town hall.
So the blue is the--
This is another commercial site.
That's another commercial, and then the Muse is over here. Yeah. Yeah, and then here's--
So here we are, lot seven. Lot five is the open space, lot four is undeveloped and unpermitted at this time, and then obviously lot two is permitted and lot three is permitted, as far as I can--
Well, okay, if you want my opinion, as I said, this is part of an entire grouping. The objective is to, you know, one of the objectives is there to be some connectivity here. There's a very high likelihood that people in those 280 units in the Hopkin Town Muse are going to want to use the tennis and the pool club. So they're going to have to either walk down Lumber Street, which is a really dangerous proposition, or else they have to get in their cars and drive just that far down. I don't see any logic in extending the sidewalk towards the Rod and Gun Club, I agree with that, but I certainly think that there is a case to be made, that there should be a sidewalk that connects down to the rest of the development, so that anybody in that development could go to the racket club, or then could maybe walk down and get a cup of coffee. There's a lot of connectivity, both with the Starbucks plaza across the street and this, and I don't think that to expect that the town should put in that sidewalk is the town's responsibility either, because there wouldn't be any reason to go down there if it wasn't for the tennis club. So I think that's a total amenity for the new development, to have the ability to walk between those other sites and your facility rather than drive.
I kind of, I'm going to agree a little bit with Claire, I think we need to get the sidewalk across lot five and lot four eventually, where it'll connect up to what the Muse and the other ones are.
I think the challenge will be, and we're certainly not against looking into that in more detail, we can say just from a cursory review of that, because we did consider, we looked at it, and we saw some of the language in the master plan, special permit, one of the real big issues and real big encumbrances we're going to fall into is the edge of the wetland itself, and how close in proximity it comes to the travel path of Lumber Street. And we can try to see what we have of good record information, to see how close we get to those wetlands. We did see that there's potential for relief of going with a formal sidewalk and maybe some type of meandering pathway, anything to really make that connection, and that certainly gives us a little latitude. But if that edge of the wetland comes right up to the edge of the road, and you want to do a pathway, that's going to force a filling of the wetlands and replication, and obviously an extensive permit with conservation.
Yeah, we understand.
So we can take a look at it and see if--
I think somewhere we want to get there, and the town took Paul's land along West Main Street and constructed the sidewalks, so right now, he's in better shape than we were when we did the master plan special permit. So we've got the connectivity to the new area, we now want to bring it, I think, down to Lumber Street. And I'm willing to sacrifice, I think, the sidewalk in front of the place, given that there's not much more to go to the south of it.
I agree.
But we'd like to see contribution of at least equivalent amount--
Sidewalk to the north.
Towards the north.
So you're cutting the long Lumber Street there, through the, I can't see it there, whatever, yes?
So this dash line, that's the wetland right there.
Yeah.
And that was done through an Anrad process, and there's an old rad in place that everybody agrees upon.
It might be a sidewalk with a curb and, you know, right on the road, too, if it has to be.
Well, we'll look at it and see before the next hearing what the feasibility is and the potential impact.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to see a sidewalk along the hallway, and it is one big unit, I'd like to see from--
from Main Street, West Main Street, down all the way to the edge of this project because I do walk that Lumber Street. We do cleanups in town. A lot of people live on Lumber Street, walk along it. If you're making a more of a destination for people to go to, the shops, the restaurants, I think that people wouldn't mind walking down or jogging down, getting a cup of coffee or juice or something, and then running back up along Lumber Street. And that's why I'm in support of the sidewalk all the way through the frontage. And I think it can happen on parcel four, like Ken's describing, along the wetland in that way because the road's there and we have an edge of a road. But for this property, for this project, I'm in full support of a sidewalk along the whole length of it.
Is it front of it, too?
In front of it. Oh, along Lumber Street. Because there are people that live on Lumber Street that walk up and down it. And I've walked up and down it. I've done town cleanups on Greenup Day. And you know what? If you're building a building and you're making more of a destination for people, I think more people will be walking it. You guys said no one walks along it. I've walked along it. It's, we'll try to make it better and.
Yeah, I would disagree with that. I think if you connect to the edge where the parking lot is, then you've got access to the facility.
Do they mind people cutting through the parking lot? I mean, mind cutting through the parking lot, but I don't think that's part of what they're saying.
I think one of the things.
We have, I'm sorry, we have a sidewalk from this intersection all the way into our site, all the way to the facility.
So someone's coming, walking north, would that be a problem from cutting through your parking lot? Would you have insurance issues with that? Or someone's just walking, a neighbor's walking along Lumber Street, you want to have a little safety?
What I think for sure we don't want to do is along the entire frontage on Lumber Street, we do not want to design a parking lot landscaping that would preclude a sidewalk going in there in the future if one decided.
We have actually considered that. And the grading isn't such a way that a sidewalk could be installed fairly easily. It's not flat, but it works with enough.
Okay, I think we're at nine o'clock. Elaine, to continue after design review is met because you want the comments for.
That will be your meeting on December seventh.
December seventh? What time? Seven thirty?
Your meeting on December, or next meeting, your third Tuesday.
Your next meeting is the sixteenth of this month.
What's December seventh?
But design review is after that.
That's what I'm.
What's December seventh? Design review or us?
Us.
Oh, okay. So design review meets before December seventh?
Yes.
Do we have anything on December seventh?
We have a public hearing at seven thirty by the Leonard Street subdivision.
And that's it? If we did, it's at eight thirty and do our best not to.
Is there another hearing prior to that?
We wouldn't be able to finish it, then.
It's just, I don't think we got to.
Maybe we didn't.
If we can get through all the, we'd like to show what the architecture looks like. They're prepared to show you that, get input on that.
What's our next meeting?
On the sixteenth, this hearing at seven thirty and then at eight o'clock. The eight o'clock one is the Hayden Road project.
So it's going to go to nine, at least?
Well, I don't think there's much to be discussed there.
Okay.
It's just screening.
If we did eight thirty on that date?
So design review will not have a chance to see anything.
And the expectation is this will not get approved until?
We understand. We would just like to make sure that maybe we've addressed everything with beta. And it'd be nice to have a clean sign off with your peer review, have that acknowledged at the next meeting, and then maybe any other, maybe show you another pass on the lighting and maybe discuss any other hot button topics. So we make sure in the first December hearing that we've got really everything cleaned up except for a couple minor things.
Okay. Well, part of our approval process is we've got to have a clean set of plans so, to attach to it. So, okay, why don't we do the eight thirty with the understanding that if the other one runs a few minutes long, you're going to lose a few minutes because we're going to try to get them finished one way or the other because they've been in front of us a couple of times.
That's not a problem.
Okay, so look for a motion for eight thirty, correct? November sixteenth for continuation?
Second.
Provin', second, for the discussions and how do you vote? Aye. Anyone opposed or abstain, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are we going to also have to continue them again to the December seventh meeting because we need to wait for December?
Yes. Okay. Now we're at nine o'clock and we're going to talk about trees again.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Shall we say that?
Yes. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night. Okay. Come on down. Okay, it is nine o'clock.
Tree wardens here?
What?
There's a tree warden here.
Paul's there hiding in the back. You're going to have to really get my attention if you want to say something, Paul.
Put a straight line to your ear.
Okay. But that's not necessarily my good one, Paul.
The other ear.
Anyway, okay, I'd like to call the scenic road public hearing to order. This is, Eversource Energy is looking to remove some trees on Ash Front and Wilson Street and to trim major branches within several scenic road right ways. And I put together an outline for the hearing today so that we can make some progress. We have two members, myself, who lives on Ash Street. This outline's been broken out so that I don't have to vote on the Ash Street stuff. And Frank's on Saddle Hill, so he won't vote on the Saddle Hill discussions. And we'll just keep, well, we'll take, get off the board when we're talking to those type of things, I guess. But roughly, so basically, the outline, we're going to have plenty of public comment. I'm not sure we're going to get through it today, but when we ask for item four on the public interest, I'm going to try to make sure that everyone is here, is kind of heard on those issues a little bit so that we get your comment kind of today. But then what we're planning to do is have a group discussion on pruning clearances and then a bunch of votes which will allow you to proceed maybe on a lot of different streets. And then we'll go, probably, I don't think we'll get there in an hour, on the ones where we have the tree by tree. I don't know whether the members of the board, well, we'll get to that a little bit. So Eversource, why don't you introduce yourself to the other members of the board here?
Yeah, my name's Chris Gonzalez. I work as the arborist, distribution arborist for approximately forty-five towns around the greater Boston area, including Hopkinton. I've been in the job for about seven months now. This is one of my first major undertakings, so I hope it goes well.
Why don't you kind of talk about what you want to do for pruning and what you're proposing and then kind of the rough order on the trees?
Sure. Basically, what we're looking for is a clearance specification around the electric wires. That would be the primary wires. The primary wires would be the wires that are highest up on the poles on the streets. We're looking for a clearance of ten feet on either side of the wires, ten feet below, and fifteen feet above those wires. And, you know, we also clear the secondary wire, which is on the same pole as the primary wires, but we only look for a clearance of about, you know, eighteen to two feet around those wires because the voltage of electricity in those wires is quite a bit lower. A lot of the scenic roads in town have not been pruned in, I would say, in excess of ten years. They are extremely overgrown at this point. We've seen a lot of trees that are actually burning on the wires. The number of outages has been high, but really, my main concern besides reliability of the electric service is safety in general. We cannot have something that's flammable next to something that's got thirteen and a half thousand volts of electricity flowing through it.
Okay. Elaine, do you have some comments for the board members on this?
No, I think just go through what's in there with the program, the budgetation management program.
Paul?
Down the moment.
Okay, so we'll get to you more on the tree by tree below, I guess.
I have a comment. It has been pruning almost on every other year basis. So I don't know if maybe you want to check your records, look for the trouble areas historically and stuff like that.
Well, we have pruned probably every year on roads that are not scenic roads. We have not been able to prune the scenic roads themselves, from what I understand, in about three years. Does that sound about right, Paul?
About three years, I think. It varies.
I mean, Saddle Hill, I mean, where you live actually was probably one of the last scenic roads that we were actually able to prune on.
Okay.
You guys did a very good job when you did it, so.
Okay, so at this, at this point, I want to get, because there's a lot of public folks here for the meeting, I want to make, why don't you say what you're interested in? We won't get into like the real details, but I want to make sure that we're going to cover it tonight and as much as we can. So, sir, if you want to say something, where you live and what you want to?
I'm Lori Gasser. I live on twenty-eight South Mill Street. And my interest is the degree of pruning. We're seeing that have to happen. But, you know, are we just talking about cost to prune less, you know?
Okay, okay. Pruning on Saddle Hill.
No.
Oh, South Mill. South Mill. Okay, South Mill, okay.
Hi, Mary Arnot. I live at fifty-one Charisa Road. And I'm here because I'm concerned about the amount of trees that they actually want to demolish on scenic roads.
Okay. Mavis?
I would support that idea, too.
Okay.
As your note.
Same here.
Okay.
Same here. But I agree for years, the utility, sorry, Wilson Street, utility companies come along Wilson Street and trimmed the branches in accordance of what we expect for our scenic roads. That is what I do, don't want or expect any difference this year. None of my trees should be totally cut down. They have been flagged and without any notice of being on my property. Every cut-down healthy tree is a loss for the town.
Okay. Matt?
These means for you than Wilson Street, but so our concerns to the other.
Sure. I think we know where you're. So we're on that. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Estelle Chase. I live at one twenty-three Ash Street. I had the opportunity to walk around with Chris at, I had contacted him a week prior and asked him to tag the twenty-four inch caliper and the thirty-six inch caliper treats. And they did that. And I looked, together, he and I looked at each and every one of them. And he said that they would, instead of removing trees, they would just simply prune. And I'm very concerned, but I'm even more concerned about the next generation of trees because there are also plenty to prune or remove six-inch caliper trees, which can take up to ten or fifteen years to grow in and of themselves. There's no need to take those trees out. I'm just very concerned about our scenic roads in Hopkinton, considering all the developments that's been going on, especially with the legacy firms stuff.
One twenty-three Ash Street?
Yeah.
Okay.
My name's Paul Puehl from sixty-seven, like a front street. I'm also concerned about the size of the box. And then my wife tells me and she sort of pays attention to these things, that N-Star gave us a notice about a year ago and did come and do some pruning on our front street. So I think that they have been doing some pruning to try to make sure they keep away from wires. So I'd like to have that.
Hi, I'm Julia Homer on sixty at Front Street. And my concerns just echo everyone's here. I, too, am concerned about the young trees and the loss of the next generation of trees and the overall look of the scenic roads, especially given what's happened over the legacy.
Okay. So I think we have a good overview of where we're trying to get to. For members of the board, I put together this outline. Does that seem reasonable to try to take this piece one bite at a time and get to the end of it in a kind of organized way? Okay, so basically, let's start with the pruning discussion because that was a lot of it. And we can certainly get through, hopefully, that discussion tonight. And we'll say that takes care of all but three trees. So that if you had plans on working this fall, you can get going, I guess, if, once we get done here. So I think you've, the request before us is fifteen, ten, ten, and ten, which would put, to me, such a huge box through the center of the street that makes it impossible.
I mean, I guess I would say that you do have a bylaw that says we're not allowed to take anything over five inches diameter off of anything that's a scenic road without permission. Correct. So, you know, the ten, ten by fifteen box is generally not something that is actually achieved. I mean, it is our clearance specification, but we're not going to be cutting any entire trees in half. We're not going to be getting anything over five inches diameter without permission from somebody within the town.
Yeah, but even if you're not cutting over five inches diameter, I mean, that's a huge swath of the branches. And they may be small branches, but they together create the canopy. And, you know, you're just going to have this gigantic empty hole. The look will be devastating.
What if, what if we, and this is open for big type of discussion, what if you did something like a five, five, and five on hardwood trees and maybe the pines need a little bit more above it because, but a five-inch branch is not going to droop too far. I don't know. You know, it's something, and I'm just throwing out numbers. And I'm just trying to get something to get the discussion kind of going.
Can I ask, where does the ten, 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 fifteen come from? What's the growth rate that you're trying to accommodate?
Yeah, well, actually, we, there are OSHA regulations say that we are not allowed to get within two and a half feet of the wires, period, you know, of the voltage that we're pruning around, which would be about thirteen and a half thousand volts. Add to that about two and a half feet for sway of the wires and trees themselves when it's windy. And then our circuits are on a four-year cycle, so meaning every tree, every tree should be pruned once every four years. And so taking into account growth rates of the typical trees in this area, that's where we get that extra five feet. And the fifteen feet above, that's just somewhat arbitrary, to be honest.
But the four-year cycle is an operational cycle that you guys?
Yeah, it's generally industry standard for this part of the country, considering tree growth rates.
Well, I think that's got the biggest impact. And it sounded to me like you were talking about maybe four to six feet in that range when I kind of added it all up. The five-inch branch doesn't sway as much, I guess. I don't know. Either five or six feet in that range. Paul, what do you?
Well, right now, down around the lake, we have crews working there now. They're on scenic roads. They're pruning to the ten, ten, fifteen spec. I think it would do well for you to get out and take a look and see what it actually looks like. And I think you will find that it's not as drastic as you're thinking it may be. I know it sounds, it sounds, you know, it sounds tough. But when you actually see it applied, it doesn't come off looking as bad. But as I say, by all means, go look.
Just one more time for clarification.
Go ahead, the chair. Where is this?
Lake Masbach, Yale, Amherst.
Off of Lakeshore.
Lakeshore. All of that area is being done at present.
I'll go tomorrow.
Can I ask where they get permission to do all that from?
With the town's scenic road.
We're required by law to submit a plan to the, to individual towns at the beginning of the year. It goes to the tree warden, and I'm not sure else, who else looks at it in the town. But, you know, the town has ninety days to approve or disapprove the plan that we were giving to them.
Did you get a response?
Yes, we did.
And they approved it?
Yes.
I did. Let me also point out, if I may, that they are required under, mandated by the Department of Public Utilities to maintain their system. They are required to do this.
That just seems a little drastic.
I mean, these are similar clearance specifications that we're getting in a number of other towns. You know, I do think that some of the streets. You know, I do think that some of the streets that we are speaking about are going to be impacted heavily, just because the trees have not been pruned in so long, which is one of the reasons why I've requested to remove some of these small trees, because I feel that even if we are getting a minimal clearance, like what Ken was suggesting, like a five feet, five feet, you know, around the side of these wires, you know, these trees are going to be essentially topped, you know, unfortunately. But it's been that long since they've been pruned. You know, what we generally try and do is maintain the trees so that they grow around the wires instead of grow back into the wires. It's called directional pruning or natural pruning. You know, and things tend to look better that way. But I think that a lot of these smaller trees will be impacted heavily by our pruning, unfortunately.
So when you say pruning, does that mean they're going to be removed? Or is that just they're going to mean to be cut back to the...
No, they cannot remove them.
Yeah, we can't remove anything without, without permission.
Okay.
It would basically be pruning them away from our electric wires.
But is there any kind of, from experience, that this amount of severe pruning is actually going to damage the tree and it may end up dying anyway? It just seems very drastic in terms of how much you want to cut back.
Oh, I understand. You know, but once again, you know, these are trees that have not been pruned in over 10 years in some cases. And like you said, we'd like to maintain them every four years. We just have not been able to, you know, get permission to do so.
Why haven't you been able to get permission to do so? If your routine is that in most communities, you normally do it every four years, why are you now coming 10 years down the road and saying, "Well, we haven't been able to get permission"? Why haven't you been able to get permission?
A lot of these roads have been scheduled to be pruned within the last few years. But my predecessor, I don't know, it was his job to do it, and he, unfortunately, we were not able to come to an agreement.
Mr. Chairman, again, we just, have a good example. We just went through one of the worst winters in a long, long time. What was the impact in terms of service in the town of Hopington to the people that received service through your company?
Well, I think...
Based on downed trees. But I know on Wilson Street, we didn't really lose power at all. It was great. So, just curious, what was the impact of not having maintained these trees in terms of the level of service after the storms?
Well, the, this previous winter, I mean, we had an incredible amount of snow, but the weather, the temperatures themselves were so low that the snow was not heavy. You know, I would have to think back to the October storms, the Halloween storms we had a few years ago, when we actually had leaves in the trees and we had a heavy wet snow. That's when we saw a huge impact on the system in general, including Hopington.
And Wilson Street has been pruned within the last two or three years, not 10 years.
Well, I don't, is, if, I'm, am I incorrect to say that now, is all Wilson Street actually a scenic road? The entire thing? Okay.
There's been a lot of work done on Wilson Street by the gas can, tank area, because they put some new lines in, so I'm sure somebody...
Why would Wilson Street be included in these, taking down these big trees that the ribbon's on?
Yeah. Paul?
Wilson Street has not been pruned as Mr. Gonzalez is suggesting. There may have been some limbs that were broken and on wires that were removed, but as far as the systematic pruning that he's speaking of, it has not been done on Wilson Street in at least seven years.
It's the level of pruning you're talking about as opposed to the...
Well, I think, I think the 10, 10, 10 has gotten bigger in the last couple of years, too. Yes.
So is the amount of pruning you're recommending, is that to allow for the anticipated four years' worth of growth and then expecting that you'll come back in the required four? Or is that to allow for maybe 10, because the last time it didn't get done in 10? What, how much, how much growth is that supposed to be allowing for? How many years worth?
That's, that's supposed to be a lot of four years' growth. I mean, we anticipate that we will be back pruning these trees once every four years.
The, the big difference is, once you've done it this time, the amount of growth that you will get in four years will be about the diameter of my thumb. So the next time through will be a lot less impact.
That seems like personally, again, especially with the scenic roads, a reason not to have this big, huge tunnel of space around the wires. We're trying to create, maintain what areas of the town we can in terms of the overall character in scenic roads. Obviously, they have a huge role in that, just relative to, I mean, you're going to talk about removal of trees separately, but in terms of the pruning, especially on the scenic roads, that just seems real drastic to be that amount.
Well, to use a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Clinton Street was just recently done from, from Front Street to, I think it was the Ashland Line. And it was done to that 10, 10, 15 spec. And that is about as heavily treed as Ash Street, Saddle Hill Road. So, once again, I would suggest you go and look, see what the impact actually was as opposed to what you're envisioning, and, you know, make a decision from there.
I have a document here from NSTAR. It says Electric Distribution Vegetation Management Standards. And on the, next to last page, it says, "Extenuating circumstances may dictate that lesser clearance could be accepted," and they show 8, 812 instead of 10, 10, 15, for example.
That one's an 8, 8, 812? You said 8, 8?
8, 812. So, I'm wondering, what are the extenuating circumstances in wouldn't a scenic road qualify?
Yeah, I, you know, if I can be completely honest, I have no problem coming to some agreement on a, on a smaller clearance specification. You know, if we wanted to go back to 8, 812, that'd be absolutely fine. You know, I think that would be adequate, more than adequate.
So what would be the least that would be a safe for the guys that have got to go up and trim the limbs, and the guys that have got to go up and service the lines? What would be the minimum requirement to still adhere to the safety requirements for these people to operate?
Um, if we were...
They would, they would the smallest box first and then work up.
Well, like I said, if we were to prune right now, and two and a half feet is the OSHA minimum requirement. But, once again, two and a half feet is, is not adequate at all. You know, for regrowth and, you know, guys working around the wires in general, it's just, it's not safe.
Right.
You know, we, we do have agreements with other towns, like 8, 812. You know, and if we want to look at individual trees, I certainly can do that.
Are there any towns that you have lower box requirements than the, what you just mentioned?
The 8, 812 is the smallest one we have. I think, like Newton, you know, Cambridge.
I don't understand if the OSHA requirements say that two and a half feet is the minimum. Why are your specifications not in line with OSHA?
Well, the, the, OSHA requirements are, for somebody who is trained around working, is EHAAP certified. EHAAP is Electrical Hazard Awareness and Protection Program. Now, in order to work within two and a half feet of those electric wires, you need to be EHAAP certified.
And your company doesn't have anybody that's...
Everybody is EHAAP certified, yes.
I think you're missing, you guys are missing each other's point. The person doing the work cannot get any closer than two and a half feet to that 13,000-volt line. That's his safety distance that he has to stay.
He has to stay away, yeah.
That's how he's got to stay away. So what we're talking about here is creating the box, as it's been phrased, but he's, he's got to do what he's doing at that two foot, you know, two foot, four inches for 13,000-volts.
He's got to get his bucket in there to, to cut the lens.
Well, I don't want to be in harm's way, but it just seems to me that there could be a smaller box, if you want to call it the box. Because these are important trees. All trees are important. They create air for us to breathe. With all the development that's going on, we want to save as many trees as we can.
Sure, but there's also a standard that we operate under that says that you can usually get the clearance you need with three cuts. And that doesn't mean taking, you know, limbs in this bigger...
Well, I think there's a, I think from a practical standpoint, there's more of a box area needed around each pole, as opposed to when the line is in the middle. I mean, the probability of somebody working on the line in the middle and being anywhere close to it is much more slimmer than, closer to the pole. Than closer to the pole, I mean.
Oh, I don't, I don't know if that's necessarily true. No, you know, one of the, one of the...
I've never seen the guys working on anything other than the poles myself.
Well, in storm conditions, you know, the guys that can be working could be anywhere. I mean, when we have trees down during the middle of a storm, a lot of times the guys are working in the middle of the night. You know, it would be hard pressed for me to send somebody out on something like Ash Street in the middle of the night, you know, when the thing is, wires are actually buried in the middle of these trees. You know, have somebody do that safely. That'd be the kind of thing I'd only want to send somebody out there during the day to do, just because it's that dangerous.
From what I'm hearing, what Chris is saying, you've got your two and a half feet, which is the safety zone for the worker, because you don't want him to get killed up there. Then he needs another two and a half feet of area just to be able to work in. So you've got five feet that, that, you know...
The other, the other two and a half feet that we have is for the sway, taking into account of sway of the wires.
And then, and then if they're only going to, hopefully, you know, doing this every four years, I mean, trees do grow. You have to allow some space for growth. So if we were to set something that's right up to the minimum, you know, in no time at all, those trees are going to be grown in, and we're going to be right back where we were. You know, I, I think there's a happy medium here. And maybe it's that 8, 812, but the whole idea is that they don't, they can't come back and do this every year. You need to have accommodation for some kind of, some kind of tree growth.
Yeah, yeah. Another question, Havas. I'm not sure all these lines are 13,000 volt. I mean, I doubt the South Mill Street line.
Yeah, they are. If you, if you're seeing them on the little clusters, they're all 13...
It's only a single wire. And I'm at the very end of the, end of that line.
Oh, well, then you're on a secondary line.
It's not 13,000 volts.
No, I understand what you're saying, you know, and, and probably in the entire system, not everything is 13,500 volts at one time. But there's potential for it to be that high. And so we have to, we have to, we have to consider it to be that, that's voltage.
If, if they don't know, it's an emergency. Better to be safe than sorry. I assume that's enough.
Most, most of, most of Hopkins is 13, 8, where you're seeing the three phases and the ground are with the little triangle space.
Yeah.
They, they did all that about 25, 30 years ago. And they, and they raised the pole up about four or five feet and took a big box out when they were doing all that work. And it took a while to get it back to looking normal.
Question for the chair. How, how's the process work if we want to talk about having a smaller box, 8, 812? Is that a motion that we make, or we ask the appellant to...
At the, at the point, we could make a motion for whatever size we end up deciding to, to do from, from a, an area. I'd also note that this really covers, I believe, 5-inch limbs, which end up being, I'll say, stiffer. So, you know, they can, they can trim smaller limbs.
Yeah, there may be many of these circuits that are not within your jurisdiction, they may not be large, but they're just, they might be small branches, and they wouldn't need your approval.
Yep.
Well, I'd like to make the motion that...
Are we at that point?
Oh, when we're at that point.
Well, let's, let's have discussion. What, Frank, are you proposing at this point?
Well, since the appellant seems to be open to a smaller box, and since we have neighbors out here that are interested in more of a conservative approach toward the trees, as the same view I have, I think it's a knock of a window for safety. And for a four-year plan, I think it could work. Because I think it kind of matches what I've seen in my experience in town. I know we've had...
What are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we look at the 8, 812.
And that's 12 above?
Yeah.
And eight, eight below, eight on each side?
Yes.
10 below, 8 below.
So you're 20 feet by 16 feet.
So, 8 feet below the wires. So 8 feet, so you have a small tree growing below the wires. You prune that tree, you might as well just cut it down. I mean, that's...
That's, that's the whole point of you asking for a lot of these trees to be removed.
Yeah, so it's not really, they're not really going to be pruning them, they're going to be cutting them down.
Well, they can't.
We can't cut them down.
They'll be topping them.
Essentially, so essentially, it's 8, 8, it's, so nothing then below? Okay.
No, no, that's not, not true at all. I mean, if there is any, absolutely, if there is anything for us to, to a lateral, proper lateral, for us to cut back to, that will encourage the tree to grow around the wires instead of back into the wires, that's absolutely what we're willing to do. You know, we certainly don't want to kill trees. That's, you know, that's the last thing we want to do. But, you know, I feel like in the trees that I have on this list, I think are going to be impacted in that way, that eventually they could die.
Do you think all, all the trees on the list, are they all sort of equally dangerous? Or do you have some kind of prioritization that you did? You know, that these, third of the trees are really, it's most essential that these be pruned, and then there's a second tier? Was there any kind of prioritization? Or are these all equally dangerous trees?
Well, once again, a lot of the trees that are between an inch and a half and six inches in diameter aren't necessarily dangerous. You know, we can prune those successfully, you know, out of our wires, and, you know, every source will get what they want, which is protection of the wires and, and making sure that the, the safety hazard is, is nullified. Any of the bigger trees, you know, my foresters were the ones who identified a lot of these. And some of the trees, they identified them because they were within that two feet, five inches, two feet, six inches required by OSHA. You know, it could be, a tree could be completely healthy, but if, if it's within that zone, that is something we're asking to take down.
Is it, is it possible to, to do a further analysis of trees on which streets?
Yeah. Because it is quite revealing when you do see rich trees. So I think that, in my opinion, I think that all of the trees should be tagged, all of them, because it comes out to 240 trees on Ash Street. 240 trees. 112 trees on Wilson Street. 73 trees on Front Street. For a total of 425 trees that you have just on this list. And that's not including, you know, trees that might get hacked and pruned along the way. So this is a major impact. So you and I went and looked at some of these trees that you had tagged first, and some of them you even said were questionable, whether, why, why were these tagged? They're perfectly fine. Some of them maybe had splits in, could be cabled, braced. I mean, are there, can we get...
Well, cabling and bracing is not something that we're willing to do, because it's generally, it's not, it's not really safe. It's something you can do to your, to an ornamental tree in your yard, but, you know, that's not something that I would trust to have around the electric lines, lines, especially since, you know, cable itself is metal, and that would come in contact with the wires and could electrify the entire tree.
Okay, but anyway, could a further review before taking down a 36-inch caliber, 75-year-old tree be done on all the streets like you did on Ash Street?
Yeah, I have absolutely no problem doing that. I mean, if we want to set up a group, I don't, if you had any other ways, you could, you suggest that we do that, I'm, you know, more than willing to take a look at these trees.
Why don't we, it sounds to me like we're, we're not going to be ready for a vote tonight. It just doesn't sound like we're getting there, because I'm hearing a lot more requests for information type of stuff. But I had concerns, because when I tried to look for a lot of the trees, and I went up and down Ash Street with, with Chris, and, you know, there's some that, there's no way in hell would I want to go let go. And I tried to look for them in Wilson Street. I saw most of them kind of over there, but the blue tags are a little bit smaller than what they should be. On Raftery, we have at least, you know, the notice on, on them. And I think we need to put the notices on them, because quite frankly, I, well, I'm very pleased we have the nice turnout we got. I don't think we got a lot of turnout, because nobody really realized what, what is going on. And, but may, but maybe people do, I don't know. It's, so I think that, number one, I think we need the notices on, on the, on the trees, just so we know where it's at. And I'm, I'm willing to, I'll say, go for some long walks. My cardiologist says that's a good idea, too. And, you know, we schedule some, and we just, you know, maybe we put a car at one end and, and drive, drive enough people back and forth and just take, take a couple walks on Saturday.
To your point, Ken, Front Street on this, this is the list of ones Elaine put together that is supposed to actually be taken down. And there's supposed to be four trees on Front Street that are anywhere between the 12-inch and the 24-inch diameter. Those are big trees. Supposed to be four of them. I drove Front Street four times tonight and I could not, and it's not hard to miss a 12-inch tree. I could not find a 12-inch tree or bigger with a blue tag. So I don't know where they are. I mean, I'm less concerned about the one and a half inch ones, but they're not, they're not tagged. So I'd like to have another pass that just puts some tags.
Yeah, so the trees at my house, there aren't 11 trees, there's only five. So it's marked as 11.
Yeah, they, I know at one point, some of these trees we looked at back in, like, April, you know, and I know that they all were flagged at one point. And, uh, you know, some of the stuff on Front Street, I think, was just done maybe a month or two ago. And I looked at all, it was all flagged at one point. Unfortunately, the flagging that we use doesn't always persist on the tree trunks themselves. I mean, it's biodegradable, we don't wanna do that on purpose. Squirrels tend to like it for their nests. It tends to disappear. Uh, so once again, if there's, if there's a better way of, of marking these trees so that everybody is aware of exactly what we want to have taken down.
No paint.
Certainly open to suggestions. No, we don't wanna paint anything.
But bright orange is much easier to see even than the blue.
Well.
It's true, but the blue will.
We want a ribbon, but within each cluster, we want to see the notice so everyone understands it. Or all bigger trees for sure have the notice. I mean, uh, the, if there's a whole cluster of a little one and they all have ribbons, I think one piece of paper can, can probably do it. But, you know, it should be easy to see. You know, I, I'm, I'm willing to, to walk it if we wanted to set up a time, if anyone wanted to do it. But if, on the other hand, if they're such that one can see them, then maybe we don't have to do a group walk. But, or, and I, and the other thing is, everyone that's here, you can put your comments in email or write them down, and particularly if you have a tree at this address, that you say, hey, wait a second, no way in hell, please, you know, spare the, spare the trees, then, yeah.
Just gonna follow up on your idea of getting out for site visits. I, and also, I think a lot of us from many of the different streets, if you did have them, I think we'd be willing to join in, because I had, no one liked. I had a good visit with one of the representatives or one of your foresters that came out on our particular property on Wilson Street, and it was good. You know, there were some that I said, okay, this is okay, it makes sense to actually cut down. Because it was, it was gonna impact safety and things. And I think if we have that type of input, it can come to a good balanced approach to this and all parties can win, so.
And one, one, one part this board has seen in the past bunch of years, if it is a couple of trees, and I'll say the forest is right behind it, I remember a couple of ones we did over on the west side of town, we basically said, yeah, maybe it made more sense to, you know, to take them down at that point. If, if it wasn't going to completely gut the, the view, view shed of, of going down the street and.
To the Chair?
Yeah.
Questions to the appellant. If, um, if we do lower the box to 8, 812, will that affect the tree removal plan or any of these trees that would come off the list? Second part of the question is, on Ash Street, we did remove a bunch of trees for sidewalks. Are there any duplicate trees that are maybe already addressed here?
I think there are some.
I think there were some, I think there were some more that were, that were marked that I saw that were actually off the, off the sidewalk though as well.
Yeah, yeah, there are still some right along the new sidewalk that are marked down, almost near, you know, oh, the farthest the sidewalk goes down. I'm trying to remember the street.
When you, I had a question regarding the cutting of the trees. When you, typically, when you cut these trees and they're in the town right of way, what happens to the commercial value of the tree? Does the town gets paid for the value of the tree?
No.
So what happens with the value of the tree?
Uh, we do not assess value of the tree. I mean, that's not something that we, we've ever done.
No, but you cut it down, explain to me what happens afterwards.
The wood. Oh, the wood itself?
Well, I'll answer the question, 'cause, 'cause my neighbor had two dead ones that obviously Paul, and Paul has the authority of all the dead trees. We're, we're only in live ones and ones that are almost dead maybe. But, but my neighbor had two, and the N-Star had a crane crew going up and down Ash Street. And they dropped those two with a single cut and put basically eight to 10 inches right into the chipper. I mean, it was the most efficient removal of two trees I've ever seen in my life, 'cause they, they literally dropped them in the road, police weren't there. But before anyone could call, call the cops, they had, had them into the chipper and gone. I mean, it was, it was an unbelievable process.
They're a, they're a good crew. They're fast.
If you have a, a 24-inch tree, say, and it's an oak, for example, and you've got a 16-foot run of the trunk that's pretty straight and no relatively few defects, it's got commercial value. So whoever's cutting it down is hired by the town to cut it down or by your utility service, right, to cut it down. What happens to the value of the tree? Doesn't it belong to the, the town?
Uh, that's never, never a topic that's actually come up before. Generally, the trees that we're marking do not have that much good wood in them. I mean, these trees that we're taking down, I would say for the vast majority of them are, have some serious defects or dead, um, you know, have, have cankers on them, any splits, you know, generally the wood is not commercially viable afterward. A lot of people do ask to save the wood if we do take trees down off of private property. A lot of people do ask to save, you know, actually on our permission form that we have, we actually have an option where it says haul wood or leave it. You know, if the homeowner wants us to leave the wood, that's exactly what we'll do. You know, it's generally more of a burden for our tree crews to take the haul the wood away than it is just to, to leave it. So, um, you know, if anybody wants extra wood, then you could be more than happy to get rid of it.
The reason, one of the reasons I ask is because we've got those oaks up by Wilson and, and Rafferty. If in at least one of them's sound, you did say that they're both a little, they're on the decline, but there's, there's timber in there, right, that has value?
Uh, the only value would be firewood.
Right. So you would just dispose of it?
That's right.
It just gets cut down and disposed of?
It's, it's more work for, for, when, when I hire subcontractors to do it, it's more work for us to try and, well, let me put it this way, the least amount of times I handle it, cheaper this for the town. So if it goes onto a truck and goes to a dump site where it gets turned into a giant pile of wood chips, you know, I'm not paying for that. I paid for the tree removal and that's where your tax dollar went.
Gotcha.
And as, as Chris pointed out, the trees that we're taking down are dead, dying disease, they're damaged in some form or fashion. We're not taking down a perfectly healthy tree.
Okay.
In, you know, in general.
Right. Oh, it's just curious, what?
No, that's fine.
To the Chair, if I could, if I could, I've had some trees taken down that, I got a lower price for taking them down, so they did have value and then they were taken to the lumber mill. So when your tree cutters are making bids or you just hire them, are, do they bid per project or are they like on call?
Well, I think we're getting a little bit off.
The answer's, we are off my, my first question, though, the 8A12 box. Does that reduce any, any of the trees that might be taken down, removed?
Well, I, I think at this point, you know, um, you know, the, the trees that we wanna have removed, you know, it seems like everybody's at consensus that we wanna take another look at these, you know. And one of my suggestions to Estelle was that we actually do pruning first and see what some of these trees look like afterward. And then we can decide whether or not we feel like, you know, with, and everybody takes a look at them, you know, we feel they need to come down, then we can do that.
Not to be nitpicking, and this might sound like a trivial question, but there's pruning and then there's pruning. And there's good pruning and there's bad pruning. So would you, could you explain to me the qualifications of the people who are gonna do the pruning of any of these major trees?
Yeah, the, uh, the tree company that has a contract for this particular area is called Tree Tech. They are probably one of the better companies that we work with, in my opinion. And I was actually glad that they are the people that will be working in Hopkyn, just because, you know, I trust the guys, you know, they do quite a bit of residential work.
Do they?
I find, you know, uh, you know, the, so the cuts and the, the, the end result, from my opinion, I think is, it's good, you know, but I think there's still gonna be the issue of, you know, how much is being removed from the tree itself, you know, regardless of how good a arboric, arborically perfect cut it is. If you're taking a lot out of the tree, you know, you know, I can see people are still gonna have a, have an.
Okay, but it'll be done properly, according to industry standards of pruning, proper pruning, because I've seen hack jobs and then I've seen.
Yeah, on that subject, there is a NC standard, A300, for American Standard for Tree Care Operations. Are they gonna be going by those death standards?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, the standard.
All right. I think that's a reasonable standard. I looked at what it said. It seems to try to preserve the tree, not just cut whole.
So Mr. Chair, I would maybe like to retract my motion.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't remember getting a second.
Hasn't been seconded. Well, I, I was waiting for the, if it hasn't, I'd like to retract that motion.
Okay.
Or it's not seconded. And, um, it seems like perhaps, um, what I'm hearing that there might be a better way of going, which would be pruning and coming back and looking at this later, as far as tree removal. And the motion I'd like to make would be to, uh, that we approve this, uh, process with the 8A12 box and come back and look at what trees need to be removed after the pruning is accomplished.
You can, you can make the motion. I, I kinda wanna go look at Lake Shore and Clinton before I get too excited about the area.
Sidewalk if we can.
Well, I'm just talking just to pruning side, so they, they can do that before the winter gets.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing consensus yet, personally.
Sure, I, I wanted to throw it out there.
I mean, but if somebody seconded your motion, then we, we would, would take up some discussion on it.
No, let's go look first.
I, I think, let's go look and maybe we do a sidewalk on one of the, one of the trees, streets. Which, which one are you most interested in trying to do first of the three scenic roads for removal?
Um, which three scenic roads are you suggesting, I think that there were?
No, I'm talking about the removal ones.
Oh, the removals, oh. Um, I would say Ash Street.
Okay.
We may as well get the toughest one out of the way.
Could I ask at least those large trees on Front Street be re-flagged?
We're gonna, we're gonna require them all to be.
Yeah.
They're, you know.
Yep.
They're not by 18 inches just as a look.
And, and maybe Paul, on all the bigger trees, can you give a health or, or quality of the tree type of?
Sure.
Plus, you know, I don't know how you wanna grade it, but, you know, hey, this one, this one's like you, you know, it's in cardiac arrest and, and it's coming down pretty quick and you might as well, you know, or, you know, it's got three limbs that are broken and needs the orthopedic surgeon type of thing, or, I don't know, you know.
Well, especially because the leaves are down now.
I'll give you a.
A recommendation.
Yeah. A plus or less. Recommendation as to just which, you know, which ones are truly bad and which ones are.
Which ones can maybe be done with some selective pruning?
Yeah.
'Cause if, if you've got, if, if you're two and a half feet away and you've got a 12-inch or 18-inch going up, that high up in the thing, it's not gonna sway as much at, at the point of the wire. The top is still going back and forth, but.
Well, now that the leaves are down, it's hard to tell which is dead and which is alive, so all the more important to get a.
Well, that's, he, he can tell, I think.
That, that's why I'm saying.
I can't.
In good weather, I, you could have told, but now we need.
I have a hard time sometimes without the leaves to tell which is an oak, which is a maple.
Point of clar, point of clarification. Um, the comments on the Eversource tree removal control form are from Eversource, but I'm assuming that you've reviewed them. And I, I think these comments answer kind of the question that just was asked about what is the status of each of the trees. They seem to be kind of descriptive, not too much in depth, but I mean.
Well, let's put, put it on those forms, 'cause then you don't have to create the form. I mean, we can handwrite it and Elaine can reproduce it for everyone, or something like that. So we have more information, I guess. And then members can also, Elaine, maybe we'll set up something for a Saturday morning, with Saturday morning or Saturday afternoon work for, I'll say, Ash Street, and we'll meet at Center School and go for a walk. And we'll put one car down at the other end and.
What are you gonna do with the other streets?
Let's, we'll pick out another Saturday for each one of them in a row. And whoever members wanna come, I mean, there will not be any votes taken during that. This is purely a sidewalk information. We'll keep chatting about it and understanding things.
Now, if any of the public wants to participate.
More than welcome to come.
How will we know, though, when you're going and what street? Or will that be posted?
We can post it.
We can post it? Yeah, we'll, we'll post it.
Where?
On the town website, on the meeting calendar.
On the meeting calendar.
Okay, thank you.
And I think everyone knows how to get to that. And we will, we will post it. And, but please, if you've got particularly ones that you know and care an awful lot and you've got ideas on it, get that written in a piece of paper for Elaine, and she's really good about getting it to everyone's meeting packet for it. And, Matt?
Maybe it's more about maybe a tree or trees that are now gone, but there was some apparent scenic road tree violations, maybe on Wilson Street back in the spring.
Yep.
Was that ever resolved in the responsible party? I'm just trying to understand, so we can.
It was either Verizon or Eversource, or neither one.
Yeah, it was, it was something that was, that was brought to my attention, you know, and when I investigated it, I, I could not find. I know none of the tree crews that are under my control did it. As far as that work went, you know, my, I really don't know who would have cut the tree down. Um, the, the poles themselves in Hopkyn are actually owned by Verizon, so any pole work that is done, you know, would be done by Verizon or a Verizon contractor. You know, I, I wasn't able to figure out, get it. Everybody that I spoke to within Eversource, you know, told me, nobody was near there.
We have no resource?
And every, and everybody I spoke to in Verizon said that Eversource did it.
Who in the town is the responsible for, like, monitoring scenic roads to see if violations take place? 'Cause if not, if there is no staff person or things, that's something maybe we should figure out for the future and make sure we have resources to monitor that. And then secondly, I think in the scenic road violators, fines for violations?
Yeah.
So if, we need to collect some money from somebody somewhere so we have some money to help offset the trees that were, it sounds like they were improperly or illegally cut off.
Matt, we find several folks in, in the past for cutting down trees on scenic roads.
And it was essentially you find Eversource, but then Eversource said they didn't do it.
Yeah, I mean.
So I'm hoping I can be as successful as losing this, 'cause otherwise, we're talking to one of the potential parties about pruning and having trees and.
We're, we're looking for somebody to rat it out is probably, is the, is the best way. I mean, you know, the planning board members, one of the reasons we put scenic road signs on top of all the scenic roads at the intersections is to kinda remind people that that's where they're at and, you know, and if people see people cutting trees down on a scenic road, you know, Elaine's the first one I call, and then she usually goes right out there and.
And just a last second thought, Mr. Chairman, 'cause I think it'll help with citizenry monitoring, 'cause I know staff is short. Uh, when people move into, onto a scenic road, a new homeowner, I'm hoping if it's not.
I send everyone a letter.
Yep.
I monitor the sales and I send every new person a letter.
Thank you for volunteering that. You are now our new agent.
So just, you know, I mean, it's all, everybody's always very concerned about the large trees that are slated to come down, but it's the total number of trees. It's really bugging me a lot. Um, you know, I, I've requested this, I know it would be very labor intensive, but look, you'd have to mark these trees for your crews to cut them down. Can we mark all the trees, even if it's only a 6-inch caliber tree? 'Cause a 6-inch caliber tree, think about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that's, yes.
That's a 10 or 15-year-old tree. That's an important tree.
Yep.
So, you know, all the big trees, we all know that we love them and we don't want them to come down.
Put the notice and, and we'll put a key to maybe the, the spreadsheets so that we can figure out which one, so that it makes it real easy to, you know, it's either in front of somebody's house, which you kinda get it. The pole locations, if you're driving your car, very hard to find. If I was walking the street, I could understand it. I was having a hard time on Wilson Street today figuring out exact. A lot of them are marked.
Yeah.
And partly because I went out with you one, one day on Ash Street, so I kind of understood the system a little bit better. But it was, it was a little more difficult and I was kind of-
Yeah, I mean, I try and, you know, with the, with what I submitted to the town, you know, I try and be as specific as possible. You know, I did put the, the house address and the pole address, you know, just to try and do as best as I could, but it is difficult trying to get rid of trees sometimes.
But, you know, Paul, you've got a notice type form that you put on trees that are coming down.
Maybe even a three inches doesn't have to be-
Doesn't have to be-
Doesn't have to be permission of the planning board.
It's considered brush.
Yep.
Ken, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Which may be relevant when people are walking through. So you've got three dimensions and one of them's bigger. Is that above the wire? So I get the lateral tolerance. You've got safety and sway and growth. Why is it highest above? Because that's where people are most concerned about the canopy vanishing. So why, why is that?
Because that's where we get the limbs that break and fall on the wires. Those are the ones that actually cause the, cause the outages. And the other thing is, is that our, our tree crews are not allowed to manipulate the bucket between any of the other wires that are on poles. And so in order to prune on the backside of those trees, they actually have to be able to go up and around the wires to get those.
Okay. I think we want to continue the public hearing until, Elaine, when do we have our next hour?
December 7th or, well, probably November's, two weeks, probably too soon.
Well-
We're going to allow for time, a couple of Saturdays.
Well, I, I think if we did an hour, we'll get, we'll finalize the pruning clearance discussion after we've all looked at a couple of things. And we'll be able to get at least one more street done in an hour. So if you got an hour in-
There isn't an hour on November 16th anymore, I'm sure. You continued one to 8:30.
What?
You continued one of the hearings tonight till 8:30. And so that's, they need an hour.
So what's our next date?
So, December 7th, at 8:30.
December 7th at 8:30?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we will try to do all of the list and maybe if we do walks, we'll have, maybe we'll be more efficient. But if we take, if we take a minute per 400 trees, we're in trouble. And just think of the process, I mean, but, but maybe we'll be able to group a little bit better.
Can I ask one simple question?
Sure, go ahead.
Does this mean that Verizon also comes around and makes requests to prune and cut trees sexually? You guys don't coordinate?
They, they, they let the telephone lines go right through the trees.
Yeah, there's no electricity going through the tunnel, telephone and cable wire. So there's really no electrical hazard there. I mean, like I said, one of the reasons we prune is because we don't want people to get hurt.
I'm just curious that-
So if you lose your cable to a tree branch, they don't care?
I'm just curious why Verizon would be cutting down trees then.
Well, oh, because they-
Because the pole was being installed.
They were replacing poles all down Wilson.
Yeah.
Section.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to continue the public hearing to December 7th at 8:30.
Some of-
Moved? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining, no? Okay. Okay, there's one more thing for the board to discuss. There is a tree hearing, I believe, with the selectmen tomorrow night, Paul?
Yes.
What time?
I've been told seven, seven and 7:30, so I'm going to be there at seven.
Okay. This has to do with the, the trees on Rafferty Road.
Okay.
We suggest that we draft a letter tomorrow for the selectmen explaining rationale on sidewalk and the necessity for trees coming down on Rafferty Road. Elaine will put it together and I'll review it and sign it. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Do we need a vote for that? Or just a general discussion? May the ministers say we have consensus on a letter that explains what we talked about tonight.
Statement of what happened?
Yep. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Move the seconded. Anyone that wants to stay, say no. All those in favor, say yes.
Aye.
Aye.